The time is 5:01 PM. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone an early happy Nevada Day in celebration of Nevada Day being tomorrow, October 31st, 2025. We have a student video to share.
Way out in the land of the setting sun where the wind blows wild and free. There's a lovely spot just the only one that means home sweet home to me. If you follow the Hokey Carson trail under the desert meets the hills, oh, you certainly will agree with me, it's a place of a thousand thrills. Home means the bata, home means the hills, home means the sage and the pine. Out by the truck these silvery rills, out where the sun always shines. There is a land that I love the best, fairer than all I can see. Right in the heart of the golden west, home means the bata to me. Whenever the sun at the close of day overcomes the western sky, oh, my heart reverts in the desert gray, in the mountains towering high. Where the moon keeps playin' in the shadows, dead to the stodding fallen dove. All the long night until morning light is the loveliest place I know. Home means the bata, home means the hills, home means the sage and the pine. Out by the truck these silvery rills, out where the sun always shines. There is a land that I love the best, fairer than all I can see. Right in the heart of the golden west, home means the bata to me.
Thank you to the students of Perkins Elementary School and to their teacher, Mr. Brian Kirks, for their performance and for sharing this video with us. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. We acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the territorial homeland of the Nuuwoo, the Moappa Band of Pai Youth, and the Las Vegas Band of Pai Youth. With that, Trustee Samora, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. You may be seated.
I'd like to thank El Dorado High School ROTC for the presentation of the colors. We'll now move to item 1.02, Adoption of the Agenda. Before I open it up, did anyone not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Oh, you have one back there. Mr. Caruso, can you let me know if it's anything on the consent agenda or... Then I will close that public comment. We do have two people that signed up to give public comment on the adoption of the agenda. And so I would like to ask Ms. Kinsley if you could come forth and also Ms. Quinn. This is on the adoption of the agenda.
Well, I want to see, maybe I misread it, but wasn't it talking about the ethics of the teachers about adopting? I just shut my whole thing up, so I could be wrong.
That's okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Kinsley.
Because I saw that it was saying, let me find it, 102, about the Board Member's Conduct and Ethics.
What agenda item is, are you looking at?
Oh, um, okay, maybe I missed wrong. Oh, um, okay. Maybe I missed wrong, so I'll just, maybe I misread, so I'll just stay for public comment.
Okay, at the end, okay. Ms. Quinn, is it on adoption of the agenda? Are you in the audience? Okay, I don't see Ms. Quinn. Okay, can you move Ms. Kinsley to the second public comment? And then if Ms. Quinn shows up, let me know, guys, because I don't know who that person is, but we're going to move her to the second public comment. Therefore, I don't see anybody else signed up. Do we have anybody on there?
No.
Okay. Then...
That's adoption, consent. We have one person.
Adopt, yeah. Then I'm going to ask Trustee Satori, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, members of the Board, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following changes. Reference material has been provided for item 5.01, Public Hearing on and Possible Approval of the New 25-27 Negotiated Agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees. Additional reference material has been provided for item 5.03, Compliance and Monitoring Update. Reference, or revised reference material has been provided for item 9.06, Emergency Install 24 Rooftop Units at CP Squires Elementary School.
Thank you, Trustee Cavazos.
Madam President, I would like to second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. We're going to go ahead to go to item 2.01, this is Student Reports. Superintendent Ebert, under your direction, we'll invite students from Cimarron Memorial High School and Desert Oasis High School.
Madam President and members of the Board, Kirsten Seer for the record. Tonight, I am proud to continue a new tradition that has made its return to the Board of Trustee Meetings, Student Board Reports. At the beginning of each meeting, two high school students from schools across the district are stepping forward to highlight what makes their school special. And tonight, we are pleased to welcome our next two student presenters. One is from Cimarron Memorial High School, representing Trustee Biasadi and Trustee Johnson, who of course represents Las Vegas. And one is from Desert Oasis High School, representing Trustee President Bustamante-Adams in District F and Trustee Satori in Clark County. These students are excited to share a few highlights about their school communities and give us a glimpse into what makes their school special. So please welcome me and, or join me in welcoming our student speakers. First, we are going to have Victoria Torres-Brennis from Cimarron Memorial High School, and she is a junior. Take it away, Victoria.
Hello, everybody. Wait, sorry. Hello, everybody. My name is Victoria, and I'm proud to represent Cimarron Memorial High School. I want to share some of the exciting things happening over on campus that truly show what makes our school such a special place. Our student-led activities are thriving and creating a strong positive culture right now. Our Black Student Union is hosting and encouraging, encouraging our, um, my goodness, sorry, Halloween Coordinated Spirit Week. This kind of student leadership extends to our Spartan Hour. A Spartan Hour that's our lunch period that we utilize for student-driven fun and engagement, hosting everything from our recent Fall Fest organized by our Class 2027, Class 2008, my bad, I apologize, sorry, to our annual Welcome Assembly. This level of involvement shows how much we care about creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for each student. Moving on to the classroom, our teachers and students are focused on improvising, no, improving our academics and consistency. We are challenging ourselves by ensuring each class begins with a warm-up activity and a clear learning objective for students to follow. This mandatory structure doesn't just follow up, it focuses on our, focuses our attention, sets the daily attention, and creates a consistent learning path across our campus. Our clubs and student organizations, from Student Council to others, are also making a real impact. Our students are finding ways to connect, lead, and make a difference on both of our campus and our community. And of course, we cannot forget about our athletics. Our teams and performers have been working hard and achieving some great results. I'm thrilled to report that our student, no, my, that our women's soccer team and women's volleyball team have both made it off to the playoffs, and our cross-country team to advancing to regionals. This dedication is something that we would love to share with our community, that you can see in our athletics wins and dedication on our official Instagram page, @cimarronspardens on Instagram. Finally, what truly stands out about Cimarron Memorial is our campus culture. We have a strong sense of spirit and support for one another. Whenever it's through small acts of kindness, peer mentoring, or just cheering on each other, it's clear that we are more than just a school, we are a community. Overall, Cimarron Memorial is succeeding because we are constantly growing, supporting one another, and celebrating each success. We live by the values of commitment, motivation, honor, and success. That is what we call the Spartan Way. Thank you for your time and the continued support of our high school.
Great job, Victoria. Great job. And we'd also like to acknowledge that Victoria's principal, Mr. McNott, is here to support her. Next up, we have Danica Talbot, who is a senior at Desert Oasis High School.
Hello, Superintendent Ebert and the Board of Trustees. My name is Danica Talbot, and I am a current senior at Desert Oasis High School in the southwest of Las Vegas, Trustee District F. Opening in 2008, Desert Oasis, affectionately named DO, has become one of the most populated schools in the valley. With over 3,300 students, we take pride that every single student has a place at our institution. In fact, we encourage students to embrace their uniqueness, and like our theme for this school year, stand out. We chose this theme because when the word is written, DO is in the center. Desert Oasis is on a constant trend of improvement. This year was the second consecutive year that DO was named a four-star school. We improved math and English scores on the ACT, ninth grade credit sufficiency, and the number of English-language learners that met a growth target. We also boosted our preliminary graduation rate to 97.1% for the class of 2025, the highest in Desert Oasis history. This year, we had a record number of National Merit semifinalists, with three of our students qualifying. In addition, this year, we launched our Calculus III course, becoming one of the few public schools in Nevada to offer this class, the highest math course available to high school students. With 30 AP courses that have doubled in participation to around 2,000 students, 25 dual enrollment courses, which have seen a dramatic increase of over 400% participation with 1,777 current students, and 13 career and technical education programs with 61 different classes being offered, we ensure that once students leave Desert Oasis, they are enrollable, enlistable, or employable. Outside of academics, our students shine in their extracurricular activities. We have a wide range of academic, cultural, hobby, and career-oriented clubs. Last year, we had our second annual inter-club food fest, where clubs like Ohana Hui, Filipino Club, Black Student Union Hispanic Club, and Latin American Music Appreciation Club collaborated to bring our student body a culturally diverse and delicious menu. Last spring, our CTSOs brought back many awards. DECA had finalists in the categories of Independent Business Plan, Sports and Entertainment Marketing Team Decision-Making, and International Business Plan. HOSA had two finalists in the categories of General Chemistry and HOSA Happenings, a fourth-place title in Forensic Science, and two third-place titles in Medical Assisting and Research Persuasive Writing and Speaking. Skills USA took home two first-place titles in Job Skill Demo and CSI Team Competition. Our students are also great members of their community, and last year accumulated over 5,000 community service hours, and have 2,242 hours from the first quarter of this year already. In addition, since our Avid program started in 2023, we have become one of the largest Avid schools in Nevada with over 450 students. Beyond clubs, our Diamondbacks excel on the field and court. Last winter, we had two individual 4A state wrestling champions and our first-ever girls' state individual champion. The spring brought about two state qualifiers in boys' 5A golf, and our track-and-field 4A girls were state runners-up. Our track-and-field 4A boys team were state champions for the second year in a row, back-to-back. Also in track-and-field, we had 10 individual state champions, and the State of Nevada Gatorade Male Track Athlete of the Year. This fall, we kicked off the year with our 4A girls golf team securing a state championship. And this season, and as this season is coming to a close, we support all of our teams on their way to the playoffs. The 5A state cross-country qualifier is Friday, and we are confident in our Diamondback runners and wish them the best of luck. A highlight of the football season is when we defeated Faith Lutheran during our homecoming game and play them again in the first round of playoffs later tonight. To celebrate all of our amazing athletes, we have the Programs of Athlete of the Month, where one male and one female outstanding athlete are honored, and our recently-added Diamondback Hall of Fame, where former athletes and coaches are celebrated for their contributions to the Diamondback athletic program. Every individual at our school, staff or student, has the opportunity to stand out in their own way. Through our various recognition programs and thorough preparations for students' futures, we ensure that Desert Oasis makes a lasting positive impact on all. For our Diamondbacks, the future only gets brighter. Thank you.
Great job, Danica. And we also want to mention that Danica's principal, Mr. Salzman, is here to support her. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Victoria and Danica. And thank you, trustees. This is an example of our desire as a group, wanting to bring this back and working with our superintendent and her team to have these student reports, so thank you. With that, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 3.0, the Consent Agenda. Before I open it up, is there anyone that, I only have one person that completed a public comment card. Is there anyone else? Okay, so then we'll close that out. That public speaker time to submit a card is closed. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I'll go to trustee, oh, oh, yeah, Lenny, I forgot about you. Are you in the audience? There you are. Come on down. Just state your name for the record. And then, just as he's preparing, just as a reminder for public comment, our guidelines are not to use any individual board member name or member of a CCSD staff or members of the public, so just as a reminder. So, Lenny, please proceed.
Hello, my name is Lenny Leither. Hopefully, I can refer to the superintendent, or title at least in future reference. Actually, I wanted to comment, and I forgot the actual specific number, about the hiring of teachers, which obviously is a good thing. I know we're cutting positions right now, but there's always going to be people going, people coming, and so forth. The thing I want to constantly present to the Board until you guys eventually take proper action is that you still have teachers working in this district that are not paid for the experience in education. And I know the district, again, I said this last time, is working with the union to try to come up with some sort of better situation, but even then, it's not really to address all teachers. It's going to be a small handful, or some teachers that slip through the cracks, or other things like that. But if you can hire a teacher and pay them for the experience and education that they have, why can't the teachers in the district get that same opportunity? And again, I know limited funding, and it's complicated because this is a huge district, but couldn't there be a measure where the Board eventually looked at and said, hey, what if we gave the teachers and said, look, you can apply for it, it's going to take three years, because if you quit and come back, then you pay them for the experience and education. What if they just said, instead of quitting, just stay here, and in three years, we will pay you this much? Then those teachers that feel like they're cheated, hey, it's not a perfect solution, but it's better than continuously waiting and saying, hey, I'm tired of feeling like I'm being cheated by the district. And unfortunately, I really feel disappointed for the educators in this district, because they should have a union that better represents them. But when you guys passed the last one, the leader of the union came out and said, well, just because you have a master's doesn't mean you necessarily be paid for it. Most teachers, when you get into education, what are you going to get a master's in? Education. It's not rocket science. I want to see experts in our classrooms that are treated with respect and that are kept here in this, because I have, my son goes to West Tech, love West Tech, been very happy there. And last year, he was working in a class and had a bit of a learning curve with that teacher, because she is an expert, but she's not necessarily trained for working with students with special needs. My son, autistic, dyslexic, dysgraphia, he's a handful of energy, but she took the time to get additional training and opportunities that the school helped provide for her, so now she knows how to work with them. This year, he still has that same teacher, and it's been smooth sailing. We need to retain teachers instead of saying, well, there's nothing we can do. So that's why I wanted to speak on, is if we're going to hire teachers, we can do better for the ones we have currently. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We do not have anyone else on the consent agenda for public comment, so therefore, I will look to trustee Stevens for a motion.
Before I motion to approve the consent agenda, I was, I would like to pull item 3.10 for discussion. I'd like to make a motion to pull 3.10.
I have a motion to, are you making a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda except for 3.01? I mean, 3.10.
Do we need to approve the rest of the agenda before we discuss?
You can pull it first, you can do the motion to pull it first. And then if it's passing...
Okay. And I will, I have a motion to pull 3.10. Do I have a second? Trustee Biasadi?
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a first and a second to pull 3.10. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry?
Aye.
That motion passes six yeses and one no. So then, legal counsel, then do I move to go ahead and approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, you'll need a motion to approve the rest of the consent.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Trustee Cavazos.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item 3.10.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez?
I second the motion.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry?
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. With that, then, we are going to have a discussion then on 3.10, but before I do that, is there any public comment cards for 3.10? Okay, seeing none, there's none for, I don't see any public comment from the public on that item. Trustee Stevens, please go ahead with your discussion.
Thank you. So the reason I wanted to discuss this as a board is because as we dug deeper, there was a couple, there's one item on 3.10 that I wanted to discuss, and that is Section A, Architectural Design Services at the New Comprehensive High School located near Cactus and Buffalo. This is a, this is a costly item. We're seeing it at about a little over 12 million for this. And what I, I'm not saying that the school doesn't need to have plans and be built, and that's not the issue here. We just heard that, you know, Desert Oasis is at full capacity. We know that, that's not my issue with this. It's more so the cost and the timing. So when I look at the cost of this, I know that there, the history here is that plans were already, there were already, there was already an approval from the previous board for $9 million to write up plans for this school. Now, at the time, I understand it wasn't a gen ed high school. It was going to be a more specialized school, a little bit smaller. We spent, the district spent about 6 million of that 9 million. Now, after getting, you know, feedback from the community, the concept was, okay, we're going to scrap those plans, and we're going to, we're going to now build a bigger school, and so that's what this is for. My concern is, one, cost. If we already have plans for a school that we spent 6 million on, is it possible, or is it feasible? And that's why I want to discuss this, because maybe I'm wrong on this, but would it be feasible to go back to that architect and say, hey, we still have 3 million left on the docket that we didn't spend? Can we use that to make edits to have the school... Can we use that to make edits to have the school that, you know, we were going to plan for now instead of spending an additional 12 million? The second part of the cost is that...well, that's not...no, that's the cost, right? So, then the second part is timing. So, the timing of this is interesting, because we just were presented with the facilities' master plan. And in that, we do see a decline in enrollment over the years. And so, as we're looking at this, is it possible that more changes may come? When our teams go out into the community with this data, and they're talking to our parents, and they're talking to educators, and they're talking about this school that we're going to build, which, right now, I mean, we're thinking about $300 million, is it...do we need a school that big? It might come back that that's not the case. And if that is...if that does happen, then do we scrap another $12 million plan that we just spent money on? So, for me, I look at this, and I think, maybe we should go back and talk to that architect. And again, I don't know if that's what we need to do, but that's just a thought that I had. And then the second thing is, do we wait until we're done through...going through the steps with the facilities' master plan and see if there's any more changes that are going to be made to these plans or to this school that's going to be built before we start spending money on those plans?
Thank you for that. Superintendent, would you like to call somebody up or address it yourself?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, yes. I have Brandon on the line. He'll be calling in. And then also Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez will come to the table. And I guess I have a couple others that have volunteered.
She is calling Fran.
In case we get deep into the weeds.
So, I just want to check...Brandon, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. And Ms. Gonzalez, if you could introduce the other two people in the presentation, just in case.
Good afternoon or good evening, Madam President.
Sorry, do you have your mic on? Is it on?
Do I?
Yes, now it is. Thank you.
Good evening, President, members of the board, and Superintendent Ebert. As you're aware, we have Brandon McLaughlin on the line, and I also have Josh Chesnick and Rick Baldwin with us today to answer your questions. And I will go ahead, and I will pitch it to Brandon to kick us off with a response.
Thank you, Deputy. Brandon McLaughlin, Chief Facilities, for the record. To respond to a few of the initial comments from trustee Stevens, yes, 6.5 million was currently encumbered, an expense to date of an $8.9 million contract executed from January 12th of 2023. So, that leaves 2.3 million remaining on that contract. That will be not expensed and terminated that portion out of it, and that 2.3 million will be utilized toward the 12 million that's being seized for approval here. So, I can speak to that mechanism within it. I'll also then invite Director Rick Baldwin to talk through some of the enrollments we're seeing in that Southwest area at the high school level.
Go ahead.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. So, yes, and actually, very apropos, we heard from a student from Desert Oasis High School. We absolutely...we understand and recognize that Desert Oasis High School and Sierra Vista High Schools in the Southwest are very overcrowded. We share the opinion with trustee Stevens, a comprehensive, a full 27-seat comprehensive high school, maybe as we project and look into the future, maybe a little too large, and we suspect projections show that that school, as well as it'll put Desert Oasis and Sierra Vista significantly underutilized in the future. As we look at the declining birth rates, the lower enrollments coming in, in the younger grades, as they roll up, yes, currently, it is very overcrowded, 30% at Desert Oasis, 128% at Sierra Vista. But as we look in the future, we do think that a full comprehensive high school is too large for that area based on current information available.
Thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Gonzalez? Nope. Trustee Stevens, do you want any...have any follow-up?
A follow-up question for that would be, for the 12 million that you have on here for the comprehensive high school, is that a full size...for these plans, is that for a full-size high school, like what you're saying?
Brandon McLaughlin, for the record, yes, it's for a full 2,700-seat campus. And to respond to a bit of the why this item is being brought forward as it is right now, if you recall, in April of 2025, it was item number...or Item 3.01, it was Reference C, that indicated all of the school projects were going to be delayed one year. So, why this item was brought forward is the expectation, so of our CIP, knowing that all these other changes may be happening as a result of Facility Master Plan, is that your expectation, rightfully so, is that we're going to deliver a comprehensive high school in 2028, 2029 school year. And so, this contract is executing in alignment with delivering that in that timeframe. We may shelve it before then, but just the reason it's being brought forward is in alignment with providing delivery of a project with when we said we were going to.
Trustee Satori.
Brandon, can you speak to...trustee Stevens had mentioned about if there were changes and such from the facilities' master plan, applying what we've spent towards that. And I'd asked about that in the briefing. Can you speak more to what you had shared with me in the briefing?
Yeah, so all of our contracts are not lump sum. They're billed as work is complete. So, the reason we have 2.3 million remaining on an $8.9 million contract from 2023 was because that was when the work was paused at the direction of former administration. And similarly, if we execute down this road in the earnest opportunity of delivering a school in 2028, 2029, and we change our direction as we're at the FMP, we would only be responsible for what we've encumbered in expense to date. So, TSK Architects may be 50% through their contract, and they would only be billing us for that amount only.
And did you say, is that the same architect from the previous...it is the same?
Correct. TSK has a very rich history of doing the high schools across the district.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question. So, Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez, my question has to do with the 6 million and that design. And I know the Southwest community communicated to us as trustees that they wanted a comprehensive. My question is, is that design...could that be applied elsewhere within the Clark County?
The answer is yes.
So, that's not...it's not wasted. We can't apply it. My second question is that I just want to make sure that I interpreted what Brandon said, is that for it's...for a full-blown comprehensive, but trustee Stevens says, what about as we're building it, there's a decline in enrollment? We...is it designed to be built out so that it is done in phases, so that we're not just like, we're not going to end up with no cafeteria? Like, it's...does that make sense? It's built in the scale of what a large comprehensive could look like, but we could also build a smaller one? Hope that makes sense.
Yes, I think what...I think...and I'm going to pitch this to Brandon, but I think I want to quickly summarize what you're saying is, if we approve this, can we make adjustments to the plans along the way to make it into a smaller school? So, I'm going to allow Brandon to elaborate on that.
Yes, thank you, Brandon McLaughlin, for the record. Yes, we can adapt the plan as we go through a new design process. I think just our go-to comprehensive high school is of certain magnitude, so to respond to your question, President Bustamante Adams, no, we would not have a cafeteria. It's all built at once in this instance.
Thank you. Just had to ask, I wanted to make sure. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel like I have to ask the question, the big elephant in the room, is why are we spending more money on making a larger school if we don't see the enrollment rates equating?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to have...I'm going to have Mr. Baldwin lean in on that one, unless...Brandon, would you like to lean in on that one as well?
Yeah, Brandon McLaughlin, for the record, I'll start it, and certainly, Mr. Baldwin can add more quantitative data to it. But again, the expectation of Revision 6, basically, the expectations the board imposes to Superintendent Ebert upon to me, is that we're delivering the schools in alignment with the list you guys saw in April of 2024. We know that may be changing, and we also knew that some things needed to progress in alignment with that listing. And so, it's a opportunity cost within that, is that if the FMP demonstrates and through community engagement that we do end up building a comprehensive high school out there, if we do not move forward this today, it would be 2031, 2032, before that school sees opening. If we act in accordance with the currently committed timeframes, we would simply lose whatever balance we've expensed to date to the questions earlier. So, it's a risk reward. If we do need a high school down there, it's going to be further down the road. If we don't, then it's a few million that we unfortunately encumbered, but was still in alignment with a plan that was approved at one point.
I have one more question, if that's okay. So, with that list that we did previously, if I recall, it was in the summer, to hold off building schools for a year, like, why are we selecting just this one school out of just waiting to see...to go through the process, to go through the community involvement, the community engagement process? Why are we doing this early now? Why not just wait for the end of the process?
It's a good question. Thank you. So, of that listing from April, you have...all the other schools that were critical on that have already encumbered design contracts and are, i.e., shovel-ready. And so, the Choice High School at Robeson, there is a design, whether it's the right design, is up for deliberation in the facility master plan. That one's already shovel-ready. Southwest has a different footprint at the ready, which is not in alignment with the previous plan, the approved plans. That's what we're soliciting approval for here tonight. Cashman Middle School, Mayland Brown Junior High School, Indian Springs K-12, all are those 27, what became 28 openings, are already at least at 95% or more design completion and nearly shovel-ready. So, this would just get those on par with those other ones that are slated for 28 deliveries.
And I...and just as a...just maybe as a note for my colleagues here, I attended the community engagement among some of us here, and from what I heard from the communities, because they were...it was kind of moving towards a CTA or some kind of magnet school or specialty school, and then we went back to comprehensive. And just, you know, from what I heard from the communities, they wanted a comprehensive, or they wanted to expand the schools they have, but it wasn't necessarily like their...the sizes that we're looking, the enrollment rates, don't really equate to what we needed. And so, that's just kind of what the community had said, and I just wanted to echo that for our colleagues.
Thank you. Trustee Barone.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Maybe your staff can answer this. Sierra Vista and Desert Oasis are the two schools that are critically, like 30% overburdened. And I've been in a school that's been way over than what it's designed for, but that's correct, right?
That is correct.
Yeah. Tell me about having 40 students plus and affordable. It's not...it's not cool. But so, how long are we expected? If we don't have any other school to provide relief, for how many more years are we actually expected to have these two schools to be critically over...you know, overcrowded?
And thank you for that question. I'm going to turn it over to Rick Baldwin for a response.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, trustee Barone. One thing I wish I should have added in the beginning, so you may all be aware, South CTA just opened this year, up and down in the southwest...south part of the valley. 129...it only opened with a ninth-grade class. 129 students, more than any other high school. They drew 129 students from the Desert Oasis zone. As that program continues to mature over the next four years, that is projected to be approximately 500-student relief that it will provide Desert Oasis High School. Sierra Vista was the third-most drawn from high school for the South...for South CTA with 53 total students. And that's even...that's a much farther distance, and it still drew 53 students from that Sierra Vista zone. As that, again, continues to mature, it's going to draw more students from those areas, approximately 200 students for the Sierra Vista. So, that will provide that relief. Also, we know, looking at the enrollment data, looking at the lower grades rolling up, I've presented, I think it was back in March or April to you, how our...it's our high school classes, our senior class is our largest class ever, and they're rolling out. The incoming grades rolling up are gradually smaller and smaller each and every year to our birth...the birth rate in Clark County has decreased substantially, where this year we had, I think it's seven...off the top of my head, 17,500 kindergarten students currently enrolled, where we have 24,000, 25,000 seniors in high school right now. So, again, as...when I say that we're looking at that projection, what it's going to look like, what this enrollment would look like, that this comprehensive school would provide or do when it were...if it were to open, it...the enrollments would be substantially smaller and put all three of these high schools substantially underutilized.
Okay, well, thank you very much for answering that. One little bit more of a question. I...when I went to the community...to the community conversation there, Desert Oasis, I mean, last time I'd been in that area was when I used to go four-wheeling back in the 80s. You know, it's true. Now, I didn't even know...I didn't even know where Desert Oasis is. I don't get out of North Las Vegas very much, apparently, right? But I was really stunned by how far out there. And I just...but I do notice that there's still a lot of land, you know, that is developable, still a little bit more to the south and definitely more to the west of there. Do we have any projections of how many more homes will be built, and what kind of housing that we're looking at coming in? Of course, single-family homes, they tend to have a little bit more than, say, apartments only, because, you know, you have more families dwelling, and families tend to have more than, you know, than apartment dwellers. Do we have any projections into what is after we go in there? And I asked it because it seemed like we...right now, we have enough seats for children over...if we looked at...correct me, I think the superintendent told us this one time, we do have enough places throughout our valley, if you look at it on paper. The problem is, the distribution of the students across our valley is not uniform. We have places...or we have some places in the valley where, you know, just the enrollment there is just lower compared to other parts, you know? Other parts are booming when it comes to...what are our projections for that area in particular in the next five to 10 years? If you have that, please.
Madam President, members of the board, superintendent Ebert...Mr. Barone...trustee Barone, excuse me. So, I don't have that specifically a concrete projection for you, but if you're not aware, so our department, Comprehensive Planning, Demographics and Zoning, we track all residential developments within all of Clark County. We have what we call a student yield. How many students each residential development that's currently active, how many, the average the number of students that that will yield? Now, this high school, and I think there was a question was asked earlier, I think, by trustee Bustamante Adams, so...or in what was the justification for citing this as a comprehensive high school originally, right? So, this was originally cited many, many years ago as a comprehensive high school as the growth...we were still experiencing mass growth. Then a number of situations happened, including the pandemic and all the economic ramifications that have happened from that. Housing prices, right? The average new housing cost is approximately half a million dollars. We are seeing fewer and fewer students generated from those homes each and every year. Part of the justification for this was also, back then, there was...you may have heard, there's a congressional land bill that has been considered for more than two decades under multiple administrations. The lands bill has gone nowhere, and if that were to happen, that lands...the land that was included in that last lands bill, anyway, would generate, on the same average, about 480 additional students, high school students in that area, if it were to actually pass, and at full maximum buildup of that resident... if it were to actually pass and at full maximum buildup of that residential, if it were to be built out, and they found water and all the other things that they would have to deal with. But approximately 484 potential students. Our concern is for the cost, the estimated cost for the, to construct this high school, the district, we have many, many more pressing needs right now across the district that that money could go to as opposed to going to this potential. And I think, I think it was being discussed, and I think the trustee Bustamante Adams was discussing, considering, could the school, could the school be designed smaller and added on to as that, if that development were to be approved, if in that lands bill were to pass? We could definitely do that. This was done 27 years ago with Foothill High School. It was actually built smaller. And then several years later, we came in and built a building addition as that development and the residents increased. And that can be, that could also be done in this situation and what we would recommend.
Okay, thank you. I think you've given some more information for this board to consider. Thank you.
Trustee Cavassos.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, team and superintendent for providing us with this additional information. And I think it's great to, when necessary, to have these separate discussions because we get full briefings on this. We did get a briefing on this particular item, but our public does not have the opportunity to hear the items that we do and the additional information. So if I'm understanding you correctly, this is almost, and I asked some questions on this briefing, having to do if this was a proactive measure and to keep us in alignment with the other shovel ready schools. Is that what I'm understanding? But I also remember, I can't remember which of you on the team said, but we're going to have flexibility on that depending on what happens in the future. Is that correct, that we do have some flexibility?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to have Brandon McLaughlin answer that question since he was there in the briefing with you.
Yeah, Brandon McLaughlin for the record. Yes, to the response provided earlier. While the total amount is 12 point, or a little over 12 million dollars, we could modify what the scope of work is to make it as flexible as we see fit as a district.
So in other words, this item is on our agenda as presented because it is a proactive move to keep us in alignment with our timeline so that it would be, I believe, what would it be? This school would then be ready in '28, '29, is that correct?
Brandon McLaughlin for the record, yes, it puts us in alignment with that goal.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Thank you, trustee Ramona Esparza Stroffigan.
Maybe I missed this. Did you, did you give us the enrollment numbers currently of each school right now?
Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert, trustee Esparza Stroffigan. I don't think I actually did. So Desert Oasis High School, as of this morning, had 3,294 students, four students over projection. Sierra Vista High School, as of this morning, had 32,018 students.
Wait a minute.
Pardon me? My brain works way too fast. 3,218 students enrolled as of this morning, 136 students under projection.
So doing the math is showing us already that potentially we do not need a conference of high school at this time. So my question is to Deputy Gonzalez. I, I have concern because we, I was there with President Bustamante Adams with the community that night. And they were very adamant and concerned about getting that relief now. So what is your recommendation going forward?
Thank you for the question. I would like to see if Superintendent Ebert would like to make a recommendation.
That's called managing up. Superintendent Ebert for the record, thank you. The conversation really is, and when we think about this team had brought to you in April and asked for approval with the facilities master plan, right? At that point in time, we use the, the data that was accurate and available. As we move forward with that information from April, that what, that's what brings you the board item tonight. When you look at what has transpired from April to today, there are some things that need to be looked at, right? The demography in that area, what has happened nationally, all of those pieces. So everything that has been discussed, trustee Cavassos, you know, are we being proactive? Absolutely. But it, it is something we're going to need to continue to watch of the size of the school that needs to be placed in that area. The conversation that I had with the team earlier today was exactly that what is so interesting about Southern Nevada is that saying 3,000 students in a high school, we've, that's been for decades. And I have a Green Valley High School back in the day, and we had 3,000 kids. Nationally, that is not the number for high schools. So when people hear it might be a smaller high school, it actually is the size of high schools that people have nationally. You know, 1,500, 1,600, all of those. So I think what's important that we all keep our eye on is that we look at the data, right? Where we're trending. The team has updated the data since April. We promised to bring you, you know, this information to the board. From April, the data has changed. And so here we are, it's a determination for the board to make. We did have, and prior board did have the smaller school. And that was what trustee Stevens was speaking to, the $6 million. So there are plans for a smaller school. But I think it's, and that design can be placed anywhere in this valley. It's making a determination through the facilities master plan process, which we're doing now, of, you know, are we going to start building our K-8 schools, which we talked about? We've talked about on the dais, looking at the data and finishing out the facilities master plan. So for this board, what I would say, it's a fluid situation. We are bringing to you what, the information that we have today based on what was promised to you in April.
I just want to do a follow up because I agree with your observation about having 3,000 students in a high school is excessive. And really, this could be an opportunity for us to right size and do better. And I really want to make sure we do better for that community because they are expecting, you know, to have that relief. And then I think the last thing is, in my briefing conversation, I know, Brandon, I mentioned to you, yes, maybe we can reconfigure or redesign, but also look at the program offering. And maybe we need to really be intentional about what that community is really needing and the gaps. And, and I'm going to throw it out there, not because this is popular, but because it does draw people to our schools is maybe a potentially a magnet within whatever configuration of that school could be. So I just want to let it lie there. Thank you for answering that question.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. I'm going to go to trustee Biassadi and then trustee Henry and then come back to you. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the updates. It's a lot of information that we need to carefully take into account and take another look at. I know I'm echoing a lot of the concerns of what's been said, but the drop in enrollment should be a turning point for us before continuing to build new schools. I support exploring a temporary solution to what appears to be a temporary issue, perhaps renting a facility or adding portables to existing campuses. While I realize that's a separate discussion for another time, it's an important topic I think we should address. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Henry, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens, I want to make a comment, but I want to make sure you're not calling for the question. Okay, thank you. And I do thank the trustees that attended that community presentation at Desert Oasis when we had it. It was very lively, a lot of emotions. I do want to tell the trustees that this community has been waiting a very long time. When they built out Mountain's Edge, there was a promise to have a high school there. So it's been that long. And every step of the way, they have been told, no, keep waiting, keep waiting, keep waiting. And so when you're in stress, you don't, you want the temporary solution and you want relief right away. So the community has been waiting. The decision was made to go ahead and not go with the specialized school concept that the decision by that community was to have a comprehensive. And I just want to just say that that community has been waiting a long time. I like the fact that we have mobility and the scope and that we have the flexibility that we will be, be able to make decisions as we continue to be informed by the superintendent. But I just want to plant that seed in the trustee's head that I, there was in other trustees before us that there was delay, delay. Also, I know that I've been working with Clark County Commissioner Jones to say, how could we together, instead of being on the opposite sides of an opinion, work together to serve that community? So thank you for allowing me that comment. Trustee Stevens.
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that the reason why I pulled this wasn't because I don't think that there is a need. I understand that Sierra Vista and Desert Oasis are bursting at the seams today. And I do understand that the community would like to see relief. That's, that's neither here nor there when I'm looking at. I'm looking at our role, being fiscally responsible. If we, it, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this was a decision that was made a little while ago, right? When we had very specific data. And now it's come before us when we have some new data. And it sounds like we're not even sure if we're still going to go with a fully comprehensive high school in that area. For all we know, we could change our minds again and go back to the plans that we already spent money on. So my concern is if we're still not sure what type of school or how big the school is going to be today, but we're saying, okay, you can have $12 million to draw up the plans for a school we might not build, that's a concern for me as a, as a trustee. I don't feel good about it. So I am going to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve B through F on this award document and put a hold on A to see if the district would like to either change the verbiage on this or, or something. Or wait, even wait until the facilities master plan is complete. But I would like to put a hold on A and approve B through F on this document.
Okay, I have a motion, trustee Biassadi.
I will second that motion.
I have a first and a second. The motion is to approve items B through F and put a hold on A. So please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
I abstain.
Okay, so I have three yeses, three noes, and one abstention. So it doesn't pass. Would someone else like to make a motion? Trustee Dominguez.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion, but I, I'm going to ask our attorney if this is similar to it. But I, I, I want to, I'm going to make a motion to approve 3.1, 3.10, my apologies, B through F. And for CCSD to go back to, to the drawing board. Well, I feel like this is a similar motion, but all right, I withdraw.
Thank you. Trustee Cavassos.
Yes, Madam President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve 3.10 capital improvement contract awards.
Thank you, trustee Stroffigan.
I will second the motion.
I have a first and a second to approve item 3.10. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
Yes, that passes 4-3. I was like, how come I cannot count because Tamika's not in there? So that passes 43. Next item, trustee Henry, if I could ask you to please read the warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. The ratified warrant is listed in the bill's payable transmital and board memorandum, number 7-25-26, in the total amount of $195,125,058.66.
Thank you, trustee Henry. We're going to now move on to 4.01, 2425 Student Achievement and Nevada School Performance Framework. Before I open that item, is there anyone that did not get a chance to complete a public speaker card? Okay, closing that, public comment. Oh, we do have some. We do have one person. And so after the presentation, Lenny, I'll ask you to come on up. Okay, Dr. Mans, or Dr. Welsh, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Dr. Jesse Welsh, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I am joined here at the dais with our chief academic officer, Dustin Mansell, and four of our amazing school principals. Dr. Jane Fernandez, principal at Goldfarb Elementary. Kim Gray, principal at Marshall Darnell Elementary. Dr. Abigail Johnson, principal of John C. Fremont. And Tara Powell, principal of Spring Valley High School International Baccalaureate World School. We're here tonight to provide an update on the CCSD's 2024, 2025 Student Achievement and our Nevada School Performance Framework. And I apologize, there we go. Thank you. All right. Our, just for a note, our student achievement updates were first shared during the November 14th, 2019 regular board meeting, and we provided student achievement updates annually in 2022. 2023 and 2024 is outlined on the slide, again noting the pause when the, due to the pandemic there. So diving into our data, which I love to do, we'll explore the results of our summative assessments that are part of our state system of accountability as a measure of student learning. And you'll see that each of these slides are in the same format. The grade level, assessment, subject, area, and years are listed in the title. And there is two lines appearing across each of the charts with the dotted line representing the district rate for the 2018, 2019 school year and the solid line representing our rate for this past 2024, 2025 school year. And then each set of bars representing student group results by ethnicity, English language learners, and students eligible for special age education and Title I school. So here on Slide 1, you'll see our proficiency results in English Language Arts on the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, or Sback, for our students in grade three, commonly referred to as our measure for read by grade three. And you'll note that we observe both an overall increase in proficiency and in all student subgroups compared to the previous year's results with 43.6% of students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. Moving on to our results for grades three through five in English Language Arts, you'll see that similar to our results in grade three, we have observed increased proficiency rates both overall and across all student subgroups for the prior year with 45.3% of students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. Looking at our grades six through eight, we also demonstrated year-over-year improvement in English Language Arts, both overall and across all student groups with 42.5% of students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. And then similarly, in our grade 11, the ACT assessment serves as our state accountability assessment at the high school level. To be considered proficient in the state of Nevada on the ACT in English Language Arts, students must achieve a score of 17 or higher. Again, we observe increased proficiency rates across all student groups from the prior year. And this overall rate And this overall rate demonstrates an improvement and is cause for celebration, because with two years of consistent increase and an overall proficiency rate of 48.8, that is higher than where we were prior to the pandemic in the 2018-2019 school year. And then here you can see on this table in the slide, a summary of what we were just sharing from English Language Arts, our proficiency rates across all grade level bands compared to the prior year. And while we certainly recognize that we have more work to do with our English Language Arts proficiency rates, we want to recognize the meaningful progress that we have made this past year, which shows the dedication, focus, and hard work of our educators, our administrators, and all of those who are working to drive improvement in teaching and learning. So moving on, we'll look at mathematics. Here on this slide, you'll see our proficiency results for mathematics for grades 3 through 5. And again, you will note the proficiency rates increased both overall and across all student groups, with 39.1% of students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. On this slide, you'll see our proficiency results in mathematics for grades 6 through 8. And again, you'll notice increased proficiency rates for nine out of the 10 student groups compared to the previous year, again, almost all, with 26.9% of the students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. And then moving to high school, you'll see our ACT proficiency results in mathematics for grade 11. To be considered proficient on the ACT in math in the state of Nevada, students must achieve a score of 20 or higher. And again, you'll note improved proficiency rates for nine of the 10 student groups compared to the previous year, with 20.7% of students meeting or exceeding proficiency standards. And then here you will see a summary of our proficiency rates across the mathematics for the previous year compared to the years prior. And similar to English Language Arts, our math proficiency rates, while not where we want them yet, we are seeing progress, which is very important. And again, this represents the hard work of our teams with our teachers and administrators. This also highlights the importance of middle school math as part of our Core Four Bridge Plan for the current 2025-2026 school year. Moving to our final tested area here, we have our achievement in science. Science assessments are taken in grades 5, grade 8, and then as part of the CRT in grade 10 in high school. So here in grade 5, it's important to notice that this assessment is less sensitive to those in our other content areas, because again, this is only assessed at grade 5 and not in any other grade levels. And although we are still performing well below our district average during the 2018-2019 school year, we are seeing a similar trend to what we have seen in mathematics and English Language Arts, which is increases in science proficiency in all subgroups compared to the previous year. Moving on to grade 8 science, we saw increases in seven out of 10 student groups compared to the previous year, with an overall proficiency of 34.1%. And we note that some of those groups that showed declining proficiency specifically are American Indian, Alaska Native, our Asian, and our native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. Those are some of our smaller subgroups, which can be subject to more variation just due to the small size of those subgroups and the fact that it is only assessed in 8th grade. And then finally, looking at our grade 10, that is on the state criterion reference test in science, we see a proficiency rate of 22.9% and increases in science across all student groups compared to the previous year. And although the score notes grade 10, we want to note that some students do take that assessment in grade 9, but they count for participation in grade 10. So just a little nuance there. And again, as shown in the slide on the table summarizing our science proficiency rates, we showed increases across all tested grades and all levels compared to the previous year. As with English Language Arts and mathematics, our science proficiency scores are certainly not yet to the level that we want them to be, but we are acknowledging that we have made progress over the previous year. And so now to talk more about these and how our other results stacked up and informed the Nevada School Performance Framework, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Mansell.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Dustin Mansell, Chief Academic Officer. The student achievement data reviewed tonight contributes as a portion of the multiple measures that are included in the Nevada School Performance Framework, or NSPF. The NSPF is Nevada's Public School Rating System that classifies schools in performance rating systems from 1 to 5 stars, with 5 being the highest. It is often referred to as the Nevada Report Card. Forty-eight district schools earned 5 stars on the 2025 NSPF, an increase from 28 schools in the 2024 school year. Fifty-four schools earned 4 stars and 73 schools attained 3 stars. In 2021, the district strategically purchased high-quality Tier 1 instructional materials, first in mathematics, followed by science in 2022, and English Language Arts in 2023. The significant investment in high-quality Tier 1 instructional materials and resources has played a key role in driving student growth. And at the same time, improvements in teacher hiring and retention have resulted in the lowest number of classroom teacher vacancies in at least five years. Ensuring every classroom has a licensed educator also remains a critical factor in supporting student achievement. The graph displayed on this slide represents the distribution of schools receiving NSPF points. The light blue representing the index scores for 2024, and the dark blue representing index scores for 2025. The vertical lines you see represent the quartiles of all CCSD schools, dividing them into four groups from the lowest to the highest performing. What's especially important to highlight tonight is the shift we see from 2024 to 2025. In 2024, the largest concentration of schools were between 20 to 30 points. Many of our campuses were clustered in that lowest performance band. But in 2025, that pattern has changed dramatically. For 2025, we see the highest concentration of schools now in the 40 to 50-point range, a full quartile shift upward. And even more encouraging is the noticeable improvement among the schools in that first quartile, the lowest 25%. That group shows a significant gain in index points, which tells us that targeted supports and interventions are having a real impact at the schools that need it most. One hundred and thirty-six CCS dual schools made improvements on their overall star ratings as part of the Nevada School Performance Framework, released in September. Additionally, 50 schools improved their NSPF index scores by 20 or more points. This means that students at CCSD schools are making broad year-over-year improvements in a variety of measures, including proficiency in English Language Arts and Mathematics, academic growth in English Language Arts and Mathematics, graduation rates, advanced coursework opportunities, credit sufficiency, and attendance. Three schools improved by 3 stars from 2024 to 2025. Fifteen schools improved by 2 stars from 2024 to 2025. And 117 schools improved by 1 star from 2024 to 2025. Madam President, at this time, I will hand over the presentation to four amazing principals who are leading this work. So at this time, I'll hand it over to Dr. Jane Fernandez, Principal Kim Gray, Dr. Abigail Johnson, and Tara Powell.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Jane Fernandez, Principal of Daniel Goldfarb Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Goldfarb. I am honored to share the key factors contributing to our student achievement growth, anchored in the three pillars of relationships, rigor, and relevance. At Goldfarb, we know that strong relationships are the foundation of academic success. When students feel seen, safe, and supported, they thrive. To foster a sense of belonging, we implemented a house system, transforming our school climate and culture. Each student and staff member belongs to one of our houses, which builds identity, camaraderie, and healthy competition. We have partnered this with our school-wide Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Framework, reinforcing our shared values through ROR, that stands for Respect, Overcome, Achieve, and Innovate. These expectations are not just posters on the wall. They are explicitly taught every day during a dedicated 15-minute ROR time. During this time, students engage in direct lessons focused on social-emotional learning. This system encourages teamwork, accountability, and joy in learning. Our commitment to rigorous, relevant, high-quality Tier 1 instruction is central to moving from 23 index points to 72.5, a leap from 1 to 4 stars. We have fully implemented the district's centrally purchased, research-based curricula. These tools provide coherent, standards-aligned content. But curriculum alone is not enough. That is why we pair these tools with high-leverage instructional strategies like collaborative discourse structures and scaffolding techniques that ensure access for all learners, including English learners and students with diverse needs, and this results in 55% of our ELs meeting AGP targets. Through structured professional learning communities, all grade-level teams meet weekly to unravel standards, plan instruction, design common assessments, analyze student data, and determine action steps for intervention or enrichment. This process builds collective teacher efficacy, ensuring our educators feel empowered and aligned in driving student growth. During the plan of instruction, teachers annotate the manual to ensure that there is a plan on how to engage 100% of our students with higher depth of knowledge tasks. To ensure consistency and alignment in instructional quality, we have implemented a comprehensive targeted coaching and collaboration. Learning strategists are assigned to support specific teachers through coaching cycles tailored to their identified key levers. Admin and strategist teams meet weekly to collaborate expectations and plan next steps. A teacher may have one coach, but there are five heads brainstorming on how to refine their practices. Daily admin classroom walkthroughs and collaboration provide immediate actionable feedback to teachers. This system ensures we're not just hoping for good instruction, we're actively building it every day. As we know, success is by design, not by chance. At Goldfarb, acceleration is not a program, it's a mindset. We believe all students deserve access to grade-level content, supported by instruction at their current level. That is why we have created a school-wide system where every staff member teaches a small group, providing targeted support across all tiers. I also teach a group. It's truly all hands on deck at Goldfarb. Instruction is responsive and intentionally designed to move every student forward, regardless of where they start. We are cultivating a school culture of high expectations, teacher agency, and student agency. The admin team engage in data chats with teachers. Students are also engaged in goal-setting, tracking their own progress, and reflecting on their learning. We also recognize that preparing students for standardized assessments is a key component. To build both skill and confidence, we implemented WEDA camp for our English learners, Sback Inquiry Sessions to practice performance tasks, and Sback camp for test-taking strategies, content review, and motivation. These camps are intentionally designed to reduce anxiety, boost confidence, and ensure students are ready to show what they know. As we look ahead, we will continue to build staff capacity and innovate based on student needs. At Goldfarb, we roar. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Kim Gray, Principal of Marshall C. Darnell Elementary School. When we opened the 2425 school year, Darnell Elementary was identified as a 1-star school. At our back-to-school staff meeting, I reminded my team, we are not a 1-star school, we do not have 1-star students, and we certainly do not have 1-star educators. Fast forward one incredible year. We didn't just move up, we leapt. Darnell Elementary earned a 4-star rating with 83 points on the Nevada School Performance Framework, just 1 point away from 5 stars. That's a 60-point increase in one year. How did we do it? It started with the implementation of what came to be our five key areas of focus. High expectations and a data-driven culture, targeted teacher support and instructional intention, strengthened Tier 1 instruction and differentiation, strategic literacy and language proficiency initiatives, collaborative planning, and equitable access. These weren't check-the-box initiatives. They became our daily rhythm, our common language, and our collective mission. We shifted the narrative from "my students can't do that" to "my students can't do that yet." Every PLC at Darnell began with backward assessment planning, using daily and weekly data to adjust instruction in real time so that students received immediate targeted support. Teachers consistently analyzed Sback interim assessments, MAP growth, and classroom assessment data to track progress, identify learning gaps, and make informed instructional decisions, well before summative assessments ever arrived. This intentional, data-driven approach ensured that every student, including our English learners, had equitable access to rigorous Tier 1 instruction. Grade-level teams collaborated to share strategies, build scaffolds that lifted opportunity rather than lowered expectations, and monitored outcomes to ensure every learner had a clear and supported pathway to success. At Darnell, every expectation comes with support, targeted, and ongoing. We partnered with the Curriculum and Instruction Division, the Southern Nevada Regional Professional Development Program, and the Region 1 Curriculum Implementation Managers to strengthen instructional practice. Our instructional rounds utilized a rotating look-for system. Our focus included student engagement, differentiated instructional strategies, and student discourse. Instructional rounds were followed up with timely constructive feedback and collaborative planning that moved teaching forward. We built Tier 1 instruction that was accessible and challenging for every learner. Teachers implemented independent learning activities that maintained rigor while providing the scaffles students needed to succeed. Grade-level planning days provided teams with the space to analyze the standards, align instruction with learning tensions and success criteria, and ensure equitable learning for all. We incorporated the RACE strategy, which includes Restate, Answer, Sight, and Explain. This strategy was implemented school-wide to strengthen written responses. Our English learners received individual and small-group support, and our teachers used WEDA access data to plan intentionally for growth in both speaking and writing, areas identified through careful data analysis. Students practiced speaking their responses before writing them, got comfortable wearing headphones and using microphones, so test day felt familiar, not fearful. The result? Our EL students not only achieved a 10 out of 10 rating on the NSPF English Language Proficiency Indicator, they gained confidence, voice, and visibility in the classroom. This transformation didn't happen because of one program or one leader. It happened because an entire school community believed what was possible. Our staff committed to the five areas of focus, trusted the process, and never lost sight of why we do this work, our kids. And beyond the academics, we built something just as powerful. A culture grounded in trusting relationships with students and families, where students feel seen, valued, and safe. Darnell has become a place where learning thrives because love and trust lead. On behalf of the Darnell Elementary Superstars, our teachers, students, families, and community members, thank you for allowing me to share our story and recognize a team that refused to be defined by a 1-star rating.
Well done.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Abigail Johnson, Principal of Fremont Academy. I had the privilege of presenting to the board last year when we showed promising growth and achievement as a 2-star school. I sit here today incredibly proud to say that we laid the groundwork for even greater success. Through a commitment to actionable data, professional development, strong Tier 1 instruction, and leveled supports, we have realized a significant goal. We are now a 4-star school, increasing our points from 44 to 75.5. Our work centered around the research from the New Teacher Project, or TNTP, which asserts three key focus areas common among schools that three key focus areas common among schools that deliver on the promise of social mobility through education, belonging, consistency, and coherence. It is the alignment of a school's structures with these practices that builds a trajectory-changing school. Schools must be safe places that encourage students to build relationships and feel a part of something bigger than themselves. This begins with an inclusive classroom environment where students feel safe to take risks. Our medical science magnet empowers students with the skills to become leaders in the healthcare field, serving right here in the Las Vegas community to help fill our longstanding healthcare personnel gaps. We've developed strong partnerships with local leaders, from the city of Las Vegas to UMC, United Healthcare, UNLV, and Toro University Medical School, to excite our students about future possibilities. We meet students where they are through proactive targeted support aimed at addressing academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. It's our job to break down barriers and demonstrate a belief that all students are capable of achieving excellence. A student cannot benefit from dynamic instruction if they are not in school. Our focus on building extensive belonging is clearly reflected in our dramatic reduction of chronic absenteeism from 40% in 2022 to under 7% today. Our daily flex time allows customized pathways for students, including academic interventions, enrichment opportunities, goal-setting, durable skills, providing targeted support and preparation for workforce and post-secondary success. The second component, consistency, refers to our ability to deliver engaging, grade-level content across the curriculum with appropriate support. Fremont has established many school-wide structures to facilitate this goal: Tier One walkthroughs to guide progress, collaboration through data-driven PLCs or professional learning communities, and frequent feedback through coaching cycles. We drive our instruction through the backward assessment model, ensuring that strategies, pacing, tasks, and assessments are laser-focused on standards mastery. At Fremont, keeping students engaged and successful at math in middle school is an academic gateway skill. We integrate explicit instruction on strategic math discussions, building students' reasoning habits, and problem-solving capacity. These focused efforts have resulted in an increase in math proficiency from 13.9% in 2023 to 25.4% in 2025, with 7th and 8th graders demonstrating over a 20-point gain year-over-year. The third and final component, in addition to belonging and consistency, is coherence, where a school builds a unified instructional program with clear priorities. We narrowed our focus, played to our strengths, and committed to a simplified, ongoing improvement process. We collaborate to tie individual skills to shared impact, and every student benefits from the same high expectations. Our most striking example is our school-wide writing process. Last year, it truly came together with the integration of writing benchmark assessments. Teachers refined a common language and expectations for writing, and we immersed ourselves in training regarding reading strategies, vocabulary, and calibration using common rubrics. This shared process empowered all teachers to embed writing as a powerful component of student learning and resulted in outstanding literacy growth. Fremont's ELA scores increased from 27.1 proficient in 2023 to 48.4% in 2025. Both 7th and 8th grades made more than a 20 percentage point gain in proficiency this year. This common writing process also benefited our English language learners. By providing extensive opportunities for targeted language development, integrating consistent scaffolds, and differentiated groupings, 47.1% of our emergent bilingual students met their growth targets, exceeding the district average. Our students reflect the very best of Fremont: empowered, engaged, critical thinkers, ready to give back to society. The dedication that earned us four stars is now our foundation. We remain fiercely consistent, innovative, and driven, not only for the rating but because our mission is to change trajectories. Our pledge to you is simple: we are not done. Fremont will be a five-star school, next year a direct result of our unwavering focus on student engagement and excellence. Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert. For the record, Tara Powell, Spring Valley High School. I am truly honored and humbled to be here this evening. The staff and students of Spring Valley High School have demonstrated tremendous growth and dedication, which resulted in our school earning a five-star rating on the NSPF. This achievement represents a true labor of love and passion over the past four years. As you know, no single action moves a school forward. No single person moves a school forward. Success is achieved through the collective effort of motivated educators working with intentionality and urgency toward a shared vision and goal: student success. At Spring Valley, our foundation for success lies in our steadfast commitment to building relationships. Relationships matter, always. We are united in this journey and work together to instill this mindset with our adults and students alike. Every individual deserves to be seen, valued, and supported. When we lead with connection, everything else follows. At Spring Valley, we embrace our CAN! Period motto and defy CAN! This isn't a slogan, it's a mindset. CAN! Period. Find all the ways we can help students experience success. Period. It is the driving force behind all that we do, a mindset rooted in discipline, strength, confidence, and ambition. This is what propels us forward. CAN! Period. We believe we can build stronger relationships, we can reimagine education, we can rise above challenges, and we can grow together. At Spring Valley High School, we have implemented a robust, multi-tiered systems of support framework that proactively identifies students' academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs through data-driven, layered systems of support. Our full implementation of Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports, PBIS, has strengthened our whole-child approach. Through this framework, teachers and staff are able to address all aspects of a child's needs, ensuring that students are ready and able to learn. A key driver of our progress and success has been our commitment to professional learning communities, PLCs. Teachers are provided with dedicated time after school, as well as a common planning and preparation period to engage deeply in the teaching and learning cycle. Through ongoing collaboration, they refine both their content knowledge and instructional practice. Building teacher collective efficacy and fostering effective teams has been central to our growth. Within PLCs, teachers unwrap standards, review pacing guides, and design rigorous, standards-based formative and substantive assessments that directly inform our instruction. Additionally, administrators conduct regular instructional rounds, providing substantive feedback to support teachers and enhance learning outcomes. Our teachers are reflective practitioners and are always striving to improve and increase student outcomes. Colleague of mine once told me, "Tara, keep your foot on the gas." He was referring to my commitment to ensuring strong Tier One instruction in every class, every day at Spring Valley High School. I'm happy to report that I have kept my foot on the gas, and so has my team. Our teachers remain committed to delivering strong Tier One instruction every single day without fail. They ensure pacing guides are followed and high-quality instruction is consistently provided along with daily affirmations and encouragement to push forward despite struggles. Teachers have embraced this Tier One material as a result, and we have seen measurable growth in both math and English performance year-over-year as measured by the ACT on the NSPF. This year, we had an increase of 5.2% in math and 6.2 in English. Opportunities for All serves as a guiding principle at Spring Valley. Over the past four years, we have significantly expanded access to rigorous coursework, ensuring that every student has the opportunity to challenge themselves and reach their fullest potential. Several notable increases include increasing dual enrollment opportunities by more than 350% since 2021, now offering 11 unique dual enrollment courses and serving 630 students with our amazing partnership with Nevada State University. Additionally, students have access to 15 Advanced Placement courses, AP courses, with 903 current students enrolled in AP. We also offer 42 International Baccalaureate courses with 525 students currently in those IB classes. Career and Technical Education, CTE, is exploding at Spring Valley with 1,308 students enrolled in CTE courses within one of our 10 career pathways. Now, students have access to expansive array of rigorous advanced coursework, and they are truly thriving. To ensure their success, we provided targeted scaffolding and differentiated instruction to support students in these college-level courses. As a result, we have not only broadened access but also achieved higher levels of success with increasing percentages of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams, attaining college credits, obtaining industry certifications, and earning the International Baccalaureate Diploma and certifications. Literacy has been another powerful lever in our success. True college and career readiness begins with strong literacy skills. As an avid demonstration school, we have embedded avid engagement and reading strategies across classrooms to ensure students are actively engaged, empowered, and developing literacy skills necessary to thrive. Avid's mission is in direct alignment with our school mission, which is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness in a global society. Our school-wide focus on reading and writing has contributed to improved outcomes across all content areas. Spring Valley High School is truly a special place. At my core, I lead with my family in mind. I imagine my own children sitting in these classrooms. I want the very best for them, and that is exactly what I want for every student at Spring Valley High School. Every student represented at Spring Valley has a story, a story shaped by experiences, challenges, dreams, and potential. Students are not just names on a roster or seats in a classroom. They are individuals with unique perspectives, backgrounds, and hopes for the future. Some may come to school with visible confidence, while others are silently carrying burdens we cannot immediately see. But all of them share one thing in common: the need for connection and belonging, and that's exactly what we give them. As educators, we have the incredible responsibility and privilege of making sure every student feels that they matter. When we take the time to build relationships, ask questions, and truly listen, we affirm their worth and unlock their potential. I am deeply grateful to work alongside us on the most dedicated and hard-working educators in this country. Our students are extraordinary, and they are the reason we do this work each day. I am proud to lead a school community that deeply believes in increasing opportunities and providing equitable access for all students. Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Ebert, for your continued support and for celebrating our student's success. Tara Powell for the record.
Thank you. Let's give a round of applause.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Ebert. Hearing from our principals tonight, it is evident we are on our way of becoming a destination district. With that, just looking forward for our continuous improvement, staying the course for Tier One instruction, purposefully planning for high-quality Tier One instruction through the use of professional learning communities, continue to use MAP growth and other formative assessments to drive small-group instruction, continue to elevate and enhance Tier Two and Tier Three instruction, including focused support through our English language instructional pathways and special education services. We'll continue to strengthen differentiated school supports, continue to strengthen the multi-tiered system of support specifically, including social-emotional learning for our students, provide intentional coaching and calibration cycles between our school principals and our region leadership, strengthen our new Higher Novice Educator Onboarding and Development, ensuring all teachers receive professional learning on the teaching and learning cycle, Tier One instruction, and MTSS, and continue to partner with our engagement unit to strengthen our culture and climate as a district. Thank you for this opportunity to share the updates to the Clark County School District's 2024-2025 Student Achievement and the Nevada School Performance Framework results. And at this time, we'll pause and take questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Superintendent, before I go to public comment and then questions, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I think what these amazing principals have demonstrated to you is the can-do with all of their students, their teachers, rising to staying focused. You heard the words, you know, intentional several times, right? It's not by chance. It's making sure that they're in classrooms, working with our educators, working with our families, working with our students. It's an entire system for success. So I'm deeply gratitude to the four principals, but our 374 that are out there as well that are moving with our children, making sure that they are successful and they become who they see themselves. I'm also proud to say that all four of them have been on the Destination District podcast. So if you want to hear more from them and their students, Spotify and Apple both.
Yeah, that's a great plug. We have one person signed up for public comment. I'm going to ask you to stay there because we do have questions from trustees, but Mr. Leither, would you like to come forward? I saw that you signed up under, was it this one?
Okay. My name is Lenny Leither. Thank you for having me here. I hadn't originally planned on talking about this because I wasn't sure what it was. I actually had to look into it. And I have so many things I want to say, and unfortunately, I forgot a lot of what you want to say, what you said, because I want to comment on some of it. But first, let me get to the facts. When we looked at the proficiency rates, sometimes I think it's kind of sad because often in schools, we always look at the lowest-performing groups, and we look to see how we can raise up those to close the achievement gap. And yet, when you look at this state and almost every state in America, the highest achievement group ethnically are the Asians. And personally, I think a lot of that is inside the culture. Education is just so important. And yet, we don't really look and see how can we duplicate that to other groups, because when I look at some of these numbers, I was like, high school science, I think, the black community was at like 6% proficiency. It was terrible. Math proficiency rates for high school students, I think, was 20% overall. For some, again, blacks, I think, were 12, Hispanics, I think, were 13%. And yet, again, Asians were, I forget the number, much, much higher. And so it's not about, oh, good for them, bad for them. No, it's about, why don't we look to see how it's working for them and then try to duplicate that? Because we need to understand, in America, not for any one ethnic group, but across America, that education is the way out of poverty, is the way to success. Next, real quickly, because I'm running out of time already, factors for contributing to academic growth. First of all, I want to say, Envision sucks. If any principal, because we have several elementary principals here, a former math teacher here, any principal wants to ever go into a debate with me and say, "Oh, Envision's is great," I'll tell you, I would never use that program to teach my own children. And it saddens me to see it used in this district. As a teacher, I have used it because that was my job. As a parent, I would never use it. I would toss it right in the trash can. I've been, I spent 10 years in Asia, I saw math curriculums that worked, and when I'm told I have to follow this with fidelity, it broke my heart. When I had a heavy class mostly of Hispanic students, a lot of them ELL speakers, and first it's teaching them, six cats plus, six black cats plus seven orange cats went up a tree, how many cats were there total? The students hadn't mastered six plus seven yet, and the additional verbiage, additional language in it was already getting confused. Why are they doing that? It made no sense at all. Next, I talked about science of reading. I think that's good, but it needs to be emphasized more because the letter training, again, sucks. It's poorly implemented. I could go more into that, but I have 16 seconds left. I also wanted to quickly say, you talked about absenteeism, there needs to be more punishment sometimes, because too many kids miss 40, 50 days of school, and there's no real consequences for parents that aren't doing that. And special education, I'm sorry, again, the district needs to heavily re-
Thank you, Mr. Leither. Trustees, do you have any questions for our phenomenal leaders? Trustees Zamora.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, team. I'm excited to see all your faces. F1 needs to watch out for Ms. Powell, if she don't let go of her gas. You're doing a phenomenal job. I have a quick question directly this one to Dr. Gray or Ms. Gray? I saw on your website, you all have Winston, your therapy dog. And I'm curious about this because I'm seeing this trend of our schools getting therapy dogs and helping, and when we talk about social-emotional, you know, I think it's helpful. Was this decision during your transition of that increase of the stars, and if so, you know, kind of just talk more about it and see if other principals are encouraged to possibly get a therapy dog for themselves?
Trustee Zamora, thank you for the question. Kim Gray for the record. Yes, Winston came, I believe, at the beginning of last year. My intention was not to have a therapy dog. I adopted Winston on my own, and as I saw his temperament play out, we put him through therapy school, and he has been an amazing addition to the campus. We use him often with behaviors in students as a reward. If they do well during their day, if they do well within a certain time period, their reward is to come and spend time with Winston at the end of the day.
Thank you for that. I really love that idea. I know there is some schools that even have chickens, which is a lot more fun. I mean, Winston looks cute on the picture, but it's great. And then the other two questions I have are very much kind of just overall for the schools that did have- that did have a two-to-three star increase. How many vacancies did you have during that transition period, and how did you overcome that, increasing the stars with those vacancies?
Thank you for the question. Kim Gray for the record. Darnell Elementary School did not have any vacancies. I have a very veteran staff, and they don't leave. We're fortunate.
Thank you for the question, trustee Zamora. We only have one long-term vacancy, but our long-term sub is really great, and nobody's leaving Goldfarb, too.
Trustee Zamora, thank you for the question. Abigail Johnson for the record. We had one long-term sub and a vacancy last year, but she'd been with us for several years, and she was, and she's in a teaching program, you know, so it's, so that worked out very well. Yeah.
Thank you for that, because I know that's also a factor when we're trying to, you know, increase the stars, just be better. Vacancies just seems to be a barrier. The second question I have is your parent involvement. In a percentage-wise, like, can you tell me kind of what percent of parent involvement do you have in your school? And what is one thing that you are so proud of that you do to get that parent involvement in the school?
Thank you for the question. Abigail Johnson for the record. We host family nights through the year. I am proud, most proud of our monthly PAC meetings. We bring, we have it online, we offer it online and in person. We always have refreshments. We bring in a speaker from family engagement or community organization. We have UNLVs coming to offer college-going advice in December to our PAC meetings, so we promote that ahead of time. We have a stand, a kind of a regular schedule, so parents know how to anticipate it. We routinely get about 30 to 35 parents in person, and then maybe another 20 to 25 online coming on and off. So, and we also are starting a PTO. So you don't see those very often at the middle school level, so it's growing. But that is, we're still building. You know, we always want more, because as students get older, there tends to be a little bit, you know, parents pull back a bit. But actually, in middle school, we really, really need parent partnerships, so we continue to build on that and invite them into the space, make sure they feel welcome, and give them opportunities to see what their kids are doing. That's what, that's what parents really want, I believe, in families. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, trustee Zamora. We ensure consistent two-way communication by using platforms like ClassDojo, ParentLink, or quick translated messages aside from welcoming our parents to our school anytime. We also send weekly newsletters or classroom updates. We hold regular check-in calls or emails and not just during conferences. And, but what I am most proud of is our grade-level family engagement days. So grade-level host literacy nights, math game nights, or science expos, where families learn hands-on strategies to support learning at home. We overtake home materials or learning kits with tips, books, manipulatives for continued practice. We also invite families to student showcases or presentations, house events, ROR assemblies or awards ceremonies. And we also engage in student-led conferences, and parents really love that, because students are the ones informing them about their data and telling them about the reflections on their data. And also towards the end of the school year, I send a feedback suggestion survey to our parents, so they have an avenue to share their ideas with the school. And probably, approximately 70% of our students are engaged at the school. Every time we do have an event, our NPR is full pack.
Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation. It's great to hear. I think I want to just make sure we highlight something and just, or note that stability matters. And our kids did suffer a big setback during the pandemic and the hardships our kids faced when the schools were shut down. And, and though, you know, though even at the pre-pandemic rates, we could always do better, but I think it's really important to highlight the tremendous strides our educators, our principals, and our leadership has done since the pandemic. And I want to make sure that we are still recovering from the decisions made to close our schools and the academic consequences those had. And I know you talked about parents and going out to, assisting parents and reaching out to them. What are we doing to highlight or to identify those students in that first quarter, when we start realizing these kids need help? And that's for anyone, if anyone wants to take it.
Thank you for the question, trustee Dominguez. Kim Gray for the record. At the elementary level, relationships are everything. We spend that first quarter really digging in and building those relationships with our kids, because we're never going to know what's going on unless they trust us enough to tell us.
Is there a system or a mechanism that can right away identify as between the teacher and the parent to say, hey, we need to start contacting mom or dad? Is there, I don't know, like, I know, we got a lot of them. So there's, I don't know which one, if we're using any of them.
Thank you for the question. So at high school, I echo what Dr. Johnson said over here, sometimes parents pull away, and it's really important, we need them involved even more now when they're in high school. So communication matters, relationships matter. So of course, we have, the relationships within the classroom really have common lesson plans for first few minutes of each period for the first two weeks of school, building those social contracts, building the collective efficacy of the kids at the classroom, because relationships matter there, because that's where they're going to thrive. But then, making, we did an initiative this year where every, it was third period, because everybody's in school third period, we took 30 kids, and we called and made a positive phone call to every single family. Just telling them that we are the olive branch, this is Spring Valley High School, this is all we have to offer. Please, if you need anything, we have the Grizzly Den for tutoring, we have mental health, we have behavior, we have counselors, we have clubs, activities, reassessment, tutoring, whatever have you. We had a talking points, and we were able to do that. And then, each Friday, we meet as a full MTSS team or MLT team. We identify the needs based on data, whether that be academic, social, emotional, or behavior data, and intervene early. We also ask the middle schools, so it's an unknown factor when you get ninth graders, who's coming up to provide us with those lists, too. It's a fresh start, but it's also a way to, you know, proactively identify students who do need support, so.
Perfect. Thank you. And I know another thing that I really appreciate from our leadership here is that the professional learning that our principals were given and are, we're kind of uniting everybody's ideas now. And I wanted to gain your thoughts on the training you guys had in the summer. I think it was like in June, maybe, it might have been in July, but it was the professional learning that we had for our principals.
Which one was it, Ms. Dominguez?
Yeah, there was a few. There was, it was right before school started, and it was just to bring principals all together to making sure we were all on the same page.
Yeah, go ahead. Dr. Mansel.
Yeah. Trustee Dominguez, thank you for the question. So the first professional learning that was offered during the summer was for our new principals. And what that was is it's the kickoff to ensure that all of our new principals are prepared to lead their school. It was not for all of the principals in the entire district. And what they do is they really lean into the teaching and learning cycle, the supervision cycle, ensuring that they're ready to welcome their teachers onto their campus. The second large professional learning that occurred was for all of our new teachers, and that was a week-long professional learning after the kickoff. They broke down into content-specific or grade-level-specific professional learning sessions, where they really were able to dig into that Tier One instructional materials, MTSS, the teaching and learning cycle, to ensure that those first few weeks of school, they were prepared to welcome students and begin immediately with an instruction.
Got it. Thank you. And I know we had talked also during our briefing about the professional learning, and so that's the part I'm trying to hone in on, is the, is all these lessons learned and how we're going to pull it all together for everyone.
Wonderful. Yes, thank you so much for refreshing my memory on that part. So I'm working alongside Dr. Deanna Jaskulski, and she's working with region leadership. We are identifying principals like these four who are doing exemplary work on their campus. The professional learning is going to be called What Works for Me in CCSD, where we are tapping our principals who are doing the work, showing results on their campus, where they can then share that great exemplar, whether it's what they're doing around English language instruction, whether it's mathematics, whether it's reducing chronic absenteeism, then they can kind of share their tricks of the trade that work for them on their campus, and then other principals can see it in live action and then turn around and hopefully replicate that on their own campus to improve outcomes for their students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't have a question. I just wanted to share a quick story. I had the honor of joining Principal Powell at an event she created to recognize the staff at Spring Valley High School. The attention to detail, the red carpet they walked in on, the beautifully decorated room, students dressed in bow ties to serve them, and the toast with glasses of apple cider following a video highlighting their progress before she announced a higher rating was a true example of a leadership that builds morale. As a teacher, shared with me that day, Principal Powell came to the school with high standards and never let up. And I've seen her leadership firsthand, even when she didn't know a struggling student was the child of a trustee. She treated that student with utmost care and saw that student all the way to graduation. So thank you for that. Behavior breeds behavior, and a principal can truly make or break a school. I'm grateful for all the principals who have helped build our schools into higher-rated institutions. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, leaders. Trustee Cavassos.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Wow, I don't even know where to start here. Thank you so much for this presentation. It's just always a pleasure. I don't want to say that we enjoy the student presentations more than the principals, but you guys are right up there. That's all I can tell you. I just want to say that instead of asking questions, because I would keep you here all night and be very extremely unpopular with this audience here, I'm just going to, I'm just going to read off some of the, shall we say, the consistent factors I heard in all four of the principals' presentations. Those were strong relationships, culture, including, I think that what Principal announced said about the houses, the different houses with the culture, I love that. The teacher feedback, including the house system, the embedding riding across the continuum, I think that was, I think that was Fremont. The strong Tier One implementation, the diversity of opportunities, the belonging and seeing every student, being, having them be seen and heard and not be looked at as just a data point. Rising above challenges, connections, high expectations, and most of all, and I think Superintendent Ebert has mentioned this several times, is the unbelievable passion that you all show for your vocation. Sitting here, I would have to say that you all would convince me that you have the best job in the world. That's how you present it. And also, too, I just want to ask, can we have Winston visit us? Can we have the therapy dog visit us? But anyway, I want to thank you so much. Congratulations on your achievements, and congratulations to the whole team. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Trustee Esparsa Stoffigan.
Okay. All right. I know some of these amazing people. So, you know, look, I don't know if anybody understands the tireless effort, the efforts that are expressed and the sacrifices you as leaders have made for your community. So I just want to put that out there and publicly thank you, because Wallace Foundation says the second most important factor is the principal in the building. Number one is the teacher. Number one is the teacher. So I do have two questions, okay? So I just wanted to put this out. First one is to our team. What is our, what is our succession planning? Like, what are we, how do we, what are we doing different to get more of this in all of our schools?
Thank you for the question. I'll speak to that. I mean, in addition to some of those sessions, like a what's works for me, that's part of the work that we also are doing with our region collaboratives, bringing our principals together, sometimes in feeder alignment, sometimes in grade levels, but to really help to share those common things that are working across schools, be able to solve some of those problems, because that's exactly it. Like, we need, we need some of this to rub off on everybody, and that's how you do it, is to be able to share some of those ideas. I think that's, I think, one of the most important structures that we have, is building in that PLC time for our principal leaders.
Trustee Esparsa Stoffigan, Dustin Mansel for the record. To add to what Dr. Welsh had mentioned, we have a learning strategist professional learning series as well, to ensure that we're providing leadership opportunities to teachers who may even be looking into the future to be administrators. In this way, it is not a teacher who's just leaving the classroom and jumping right into the AP ship, the assistant principalship, but may have some leadership opportunities across the campus, more wide-scale, working alongside really strong principals, who then, by the time they are promoted into the assistant principalship, also have experience with walkthroughs, instructional rounds, and Tier One instruction, and mentorship, and coaching, and building social-emotional learning platforms on their campus.
Thank you for that. And I am really, I'm so encouraged by the fact that we have a succession plan, because it does matter. So this next one, you don't all have to answer it, and we're trying to create a safe place. So your boss is here, your bosses are here, but really, I would say you are in a safe place psychologically and all and other. Tell us, I'm curious, what is it you need, you need next as leaders?
Thank you for the question. Kim Gray, the brave one, for the record. Complete transparency. I've lost four teachers in the last two years that provided significant Tier Two support. We are really, right now, thinking outside the box to continue to provide that support to our students. I need those teachers back.
Thank you for the question. Eye contact, right? I agree with Kim. Funding. Most of our budget, operating budget, is human capital, our people. Our people matter. Being able to keep our class sizes smaller, more manageable, for that targeted instruction, pulling groups, even in the high school level, is so important in alignment with our school performance plans. I've been able to keep English classes and mathematics classes small, so that I can proactively identify those gaps early on, pull groups, reteach, teach, and get the kids those foundational skills, so when they can access advanced coursework. So staffing and keeping those numbers is really paramount.
Trustee Esparsa Stoffigan, thank you for the question. Abigail Johnson for the record. I agree, funding, yes. I just, I think that simple is brilliant. And so bringing, you know, we talk about succession plan, and I am very excited for what's coming with our new leadership. I think focusing in on some key leverage areas and really going strong with that, because it's challenging when there's so many areas of focus to really follow through. And so I think that, you know, narrowing our focus in on some really impactful, you know, changes, and then providing that support and making sure those are, you know, fully implemented, or at least to a level of, you know, agreement before adding new. I just read it recently. It's like, you know, sometimes in education, we want to chase that next shiny thing, and we really need to stay focused. So that's what I would appreciate in the succession and moving forward.
Thank you for the question. I strongly agree with these three principles. When we implement programs, we need funding. And if we want to sustain our achievement, then we still need the same amount of money. But since we are losing it, so it is too hard. As a fiscal leader, you have to be strategic on how you will allocate your funds, that is geared towards students directly benefiting it. This year, I'm losing my C, just .5, and then my SBT. And I am already planning the next school year, if I'm going to lose any funds, I'm going to lose a strategist, which is vital to our achievement. So I would say funding.
Thank you so much. Trustee Henry, I will be going to you after trustee Barron and trustee Satoris. Trustee Barron.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, as usual, my much smarter, older sister beat me to the best question here. Or my younger sister, I forget it.
I was going to say younger.
Yes, my younger sister there, yeah. You know, I'm going to get beat up by at least two people in this, in this room right here. I keep on, you know, making, stepping my own tail here. In the 1970s, you know, actually, our district was actually considered really, you know, a leader, you know, across the country here. you know, a leader, you know, across the country here. Ms. Nesbit, my fifth-grade elementary teacher, she pioneered things, small group instruction, right? It seems like we're going back to the future. A lot of the great things that worked in the 1970s that other countries like Finland actually copied from us to surpass us, you know, worldwide. Maybe you can speak a little bit to the importance of small group instruction. I know it's kind of tough, especially at the secondary level, because we have so many, so many challenges that we have, you know, in balancing out our resources compared to our student size. But maybe, especially at the middle school and the elementary, speak to that. And of course, our very good friend that this district paid a lot of money to, leading applied analysis, Jeremy Aguero, also pointed out a few years ago that we get a really great bang for a buck by investing in our ELL, which, of course, we did. We did, I'm happy to say, we did do a shift a few years ago. And I noticed here that, of course, we're talking about English learner instructional pathways. So, maybe you can speak a little bit to that. Perhaps Jeremy and applied analysis were correct. How are we doing in this arena? That's for anyone who wants to take that one up. Or not.
Trustee Barron, thank you for the question. Abigail Johnson for the record. I think that it's been very helpful having a tier-one curriculum. So, we, you know, share that strong curriculum, and then, you know, we've built, the district's worked hard to establish a common grading policy and common assessments on all those pieces. And so, working in PLCs, you know, teachers can look at student performance on quizzes along the way, or, you know, summative end-of-unit tests, and can, and look at how the students are performing. Some of those curriculum allow you to see which questions are assessing which standards, and so you can really kind of drill down and see what's, where students are missing skills. We also have our clarity guides that, they talk about learning progressions. And so, you can see at grade level, because we're very focused on grade level instruction, right? But sometimes if there's gaps, you know, we don't have time to teach what students should have learned three years ago, they'll never catch up. So, it's just right remediation. It's understanding where their gaps are through either pre-test or, you know, assessment, analysis, and then providing that intervention, you know, at that moment so they can then access. Another thing we found is starting with, you know, where students do know, you know, in those progressions, remember when you did this a couple of years ago? And they'll say, no. And you say, oh, okay, you do remember. And they try it. And then they end up accessing, you know, that's another way of doing it. But with creative scheduling, our teachers are amazing, and they have shared prep, or not prep, I'm sorry, well, common schedules, basically. And so, you can do creative things like, in that PLC, they identify students who are struggling in certain areas, and they move students among classrooms, right? There's a lot of really creative ways we can meet that need. Yes, exactly. So, thank you.
Awesome. I'll go to Trustee Satori, and then Trustee Henry will end with you.
Hey, thank you so much. I appreciated your presentation and just commend you on your hard work, on the passion that you show. The one thing that really stood out for me as well was the level of involvement you have on your campuses. That really shown through, even to teaching your own intervention groups. So, I applaud you for that. So, my question really is about your relationships as with your feeder alignments. I just was curious about the strength of our K-12 continuum. You know, we're seeing such great things happen on your campus, but how we can ensure that we're seeing that, you know, across that continuum for each students. Can you just kind of speak to the relationships you have there? Thank you for the question. It was definitely a challenge when we came back in August of 2021, right? We had our hands full managing our own campuses and making sure that we were providing our kids with the supports they needed. So, I would say that at some point on the way back, we had to take a step back, take care of ourselves first. And now, I know that in my feeder alignment, we're starting to now expand. Johnson is the partnership in IB with Spring Valley High School. So, we just had a professional learning day, Staff Development Day. We collaborated with the NYPD teachers, so six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We just did walks this week. The principal and AP and a teacher from Johnson came over to Spring Valley. My assistant principal, myself, and a teacher are going over to Johnson in two weeks. So, those relationships are starting to flourish there as far as our, that's our IB partnership, but Lawrence and Vertita and a variety of other schools are my alignment. And we're talking about really building our fine arts through them, doing a fine arts day over at the feeder schools to get kids, when you lead with kids, you can't lose. So, you know, if I want to keep my enrollment going up and not having them go to another magnet school or whatnot, I need to lead with children, because they don't really want to hear from us. They want to hear from their peers. So, we just had a conversation today about choir band orchestra going over there. We have invited, it's a student-led plan, it's really cool. They're going to, I've provided buses, but they've created this whole thing of having a middle school day for their performance of Hattie's Town. So, they're super excited, and it's totally student-driven. Like, they're doing everything. Of course, I'm making sure they're doing the paperwork, and I'm paying the bill. But they are doing the driving, and they are just remarkable. So, really, that's definitely a goal of, personal goal of mine, is to strengthen that vertical alignment. But I felt like at that point, I needed to take time to get Spring Valley in rhythm and now really build that. So, I look forward to what that looks like in the future.
Thank you. Trustee Henry, any questions from you?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it, listening to all of the positive, all of the positivity and outcomes that are happening at our schools. My question is about the chronic absenteeism rate and the improvements there. What are some strategies that you used on your campuses to get more students attending more frequently?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Henry. Jane Fernandez for the record. Decreasing chronic absenteeism at the school level requires a proactive, compassionate, and multi-tiered approach. First and foremost, we focus on building strong relationships with students and families to create a sense of belonging and trust. So, when students feel connected to their school community, they are more likely to attend school regularly. We implement a tiered system of support, starting with universal strategies like daily attendance recognition, rewarding students with five goldie bucks for being present, positive reinforcement using Random Attendance Day, where students get stamped for being present and included in a raffle draw, monthly perfect attendance parties, outstanding attendance pizza, where if all letters in the word outstanding attendance are colored, because everybody is present in a class, the whole class gets a pizza party, and engaging classroom environment that makes students want to be present. For students who begin to show patterns of absenteeism, we conduct personalized outreach, calling families, home visits, identifying barriers, and connecting them with resources such as transportation assistance, mental health support, or access to basic needs. Our school counselors, social worker, and attendance team meet regularly to analyze attendance data, flag at-risk students, and coordinate targeted interventions. And then admin and wraparound team conduct home visits. And we also, admin also engage in parent conferences and create attendance contracts with those parents.
Thank you for the question. Once we get to high school, it's a different ballgame. We've also really taught our students how to online school. So, a lot of the materials are on canvas. So, there's this perception that I don't actually have to show up, but that's important to us. So, we had, I talked about our robust positive behavior intervention supports. So, we have our growl points, so they get points for showing up that redeem them. But we run a 3-5-7 attendance reports, 3-5-7 out meeting, and then we intervene. We need to find out why the child, we're broken into houses. We need to find out why the kid, what's the root cause of not coming to school? Is it I don't want? I can't? I have some other type of problem? And then we attack that from wherever the need is. Is it you're working late? Is it you're caring for a sibling? Is it school refusal? What is it? Get to that root cause and then, and support the family. And by breaking the large comprehensive into four smaller parts, we're able to do that. We do the home visits. The kids really like when I show up at their front doorstep. They won't forget that. So, those are fun. And we have these relationships with our counselors, having, keeping the counselor numbers really low. So, I really don't like to go over 250 per counselor. And they really get to know their kids, and they follow their kids throughout high school. So, it's really a day of celebration when they graduate, because they've known them since they've been a freshman. So, it really varies depending on what the need is, but figuring out can, period, how can we help these kids come to school and be successful. Thank you for your question.
Thank you for the question, Abigail Johnson for the record. All of those things we're all doing. I think another piece, just what I want to add that's really important, is a place where kids feel safe, right? Because that's, I mean, and I'm going to say it, loved. Like, our, it's so important that our students know that they're loved and cared for and protected at the school, and people listen to them, and, you know, we ask them how they're doing, or, oh, did you like this? Like, you just have to have those relationships with the students. And also, how engaging is the instruction? How are your classroom, right? Because students want to come when they know what they're learning is valid, it's applicable, it's, you know, it's going to be exciting. You come to classrooms, like, what's going to happen today? And it's very possible at every level to have that. So, I think that's a big piece of it, too, the instruction.
Awesome. Let's give another round of applause to our principals. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Dr. Welsh, anything else?
No, again, just thank you to all our principals, including those not in the room, who also did a lot of great hard work. Again, we have a lot to celebrate as a district with the momentum that we have, and we're looking forward to continuing that here for 25, 26.
Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, this is an action item, trustees. So, I will accept a motion to accept the Student Achievement and Nevada School Performance Framework reports. Trustee Barron.
Motion approved.
Trustee Cabasos.
I will second that motion.
I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. We'll go on to Agenda Item 5.01, Public Hearing on Possible Approval of the New 2025-2027 Negotiated Agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees. Turn it over to our, the district's legal counsel, Mr. Okazaki. Actually, before you open up, this is, do I have to read this part? This is, this is the time and place to conduct a public hearing on the discussion and possible action on the approval of the 2025-2027 Negotiated Agreement between, as I said, CCSD and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees. I don't see anybody, oh, yes, I do see one person in public comment. Is there? All right. I have two people, Mr. Horn and Ms. Attaberry. Not yet, Mr. Horn. I'm going to have him give the presentation first. Oh, no, not you. Oh, you meant six. Thank you so much for that. Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate it. Okay. That, with that said, then I'm going to go ahead and close that public comment section and turn it over to the legal counsel.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, for the record, John Okazaki, General Counsel for the Clark County School District. I'm very happy to bring to you tonight a proposed 25-27 negotiated agreement with CASA. In the reference materials, we've outlined the changes that we're proposing, but I'd like to give you a brief summary of the bigger items. So, the first thing that we did was we added a definition for comprehensive senior high school. This is a high school which offers a large number of extracurricular functions as well as a complete competitive athletics program. The reason we added this definition is because we are going to increase the supervisory stipend that we give to APs and student success coordinators in those schools commensurate with the higher volume of responsibility. The second thing we did was we added a provision that was going, that will allow administrators to receive, to access their accrued vacation while they're on certain types of leaves of absence. One particular example comes to mind is, for example, a leave of absence to serve in the legislature. And so, as we all know, those are not highly-paid exercises or activities. And so, allowing our staff to access vacation that they've already accrued will promote that involvement and help them to do that. Third thing is, we updated the process for submitting separation notice to be consistent with our software. Fourth is, we modified column advancements and restrictions, columns advancement restrictions and requirements, so that now they can, administrators can only access the last three columns in the salary table by earning professional learning credits. We are no longer going to allow advancements simply into the, into the last levels simply by seniority. Number five, we added a provision to allow administrators to reach, to cash out, basically, some of their excess vacation leave every year. Currently, they're allowed to cash out five days above the 85 required, minimum requirement or maximum allowable amount. We're going to increase that two days so that they can cash out seven. This may be, seems like a small provision, but what we're doing is we're, we're preventing the situation where they have to lose those days. We have a lot of administrators who, because of the amount of work that they're responsible for, don't really have the time to take as many vacation days as they, they need to. And so, every year when they are required to come down to the 85 minimum, they have too many days. So, we're giving them the option to sell, to sell at least two more days per year. As far as compensation, we are modifying the salary schedule by deleting column A and adding a column K. We are still keeping 10 columns. Nobody is receiving a column, no one is receiving a pay raise by this transition. We are just basically adding a higher column at the end. We are increasing the salary schedule by 3% in 25-26, but a portion of that CASA has decided to use to cover their PERS increase. So, they are using their COLA to cover PERS, part of that COLA. In the second year, we're providing a 2% salary increase. We are increasing longevity stipends by $500 each. We are increasing the athletic and activities supervision stipend. This is what I mentioned before. So, for comprehensive senior high school assistant principals and student success coordinators, we are going to be increasing their supervision stipend by $1,500 a year. For middle schools, we're going to increase it by 500. For elementary schools, we are adding a stipend of 500. We're also increasing the student activity stipend for the eight rural schools that are listed specifically in Article 20-3 by 1,000. We are adding a 3,500 stipend for certain student success, I'm sorry, student services division administrators. These are the folks that we recently entered into a memorandum of agreement to provide an extra stipend because of the amount of duty that they have to perform, especially during the summer hours, off-hours. We're increasing the, this is just conforming the agreement to what we have already been doing through a MOA from quite many years ago, increasing the administrator training cadre stipend for Level III by $250. We are also increasing the stipend for national certification by 500. And in regard to the added column K, the last 10th column on the salary table, the parties have agreed that they can only access that under certain conditions that we are still negotiating, but primarily, it's a much higher level of professional learning that's required in order to attain. in order to attain and advance to that last column. We are increasing health, we are contributing to their, the CASA's increased health insurance premiums by 10% each year. And other than that, we are just updating some dates. We are, we added a statement at the end, Article 34, as an agreement to work jointly to secure funding for all of these expenses or labor costs in future funding. And then finally, like we've been doing with the other units, we added an agreement, bargaining units, we've added an agreement to continue negotiations on other terms. But we wanted to get the primary fiscal terms settled so that administrators and our employees know what to expect for the next two years and we can move on. And then we can continue to negotiate some of the more, the less fiscal important matters. The total approximate value of the, these changes is $36,655,000. This represents a 10.66% increase in their total contract value. This is a really important number because we are, we are very consciously trying to stay consistent among all of our bargaining units as to the total increased value of their contract in these negotiations. And this is consistent with both CCA and ESEA. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Okazaki. Any questions from trustees? Trustee Henry, any questions from you?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions.
Okay, with that then, we do have, oh, trustee Asparza Strofigan. No, you don't have any questions. Then I'm going to have, we do have one public comment. I'm going to ask Mr. Horn, this is the time to come forth.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert. My name is Jeff Horn. I'm the Executive Director with the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees. I first want to thank Superintendent Ebert, John Okazaki, CCSD negotiation team, CASAPI's negotiation team, for the tireless work they put in to make sure that we have a contract that both values the work that our leaders do. I had some statements down here. I know it's a long night, so just going to make them brief. You saw the leaders here tonight. You saw the great work that's being done across the district. You obviously visit school sites all the time to see the work that's being done, so you know the great leadership that's out there, not only on the school sites, but also in facilities and food services, related services, transportation, the whole gamut. So I represent coordinators and directors, not just site administrators. And you see the work that's being done. And obviously, all the work that happens with all the administrators, not just the site level, contributes to the success of our students. And I want to make sure that, that's clear, that the representation is district-wide, not just at site level. So this impacts all administrators and coordinators and directors that I represent. I'm reminded every time I speak with Superintendent Ebert that we're one team, and I appreciate those comments and work together to make sure that we're all doing what's best for kids. And that's what we're very proud of with the CASAPI, and we'll continue to do that. So with that, I just encourage you to move forward and ratify this contract. I think it's reflective of the hard work that is being done in our, in our district. So with that, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. That ends our public hearing. It is now closed. I will entertain a motion. Trustee Asparza Strofigan.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do appreciate Mr. Horn acknowledging that we have central admin as well. So thank you for making sure that everyone is represented. Thank you, Mr. Okazaki. A lot of hard work. I just want to say to you, it's not easy, and I appreciate you mentioning we're being fair with all groups. So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Item 5.0, excuse me, 5.01, Public Hearing and Possible Approval of the New 2025-2027 Negotiated Agreement between the Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees.
Thank you. Trustee Biasadi.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We could, a round of applause. We will now move to Action Item 5.02, Application for a Parent/Guardian to Serve on the Nevada Interscholastic Activities Association Board of Control. Mr. McFarland, please introduce your group. Oh, before you do that, is there anyone, I do not see anyone signed up for this on, oh, we do. We have three people signed up. Is there anyone else who has not completed a public speaker card that would like to give comment on this section? Okay, seeing none, we will close that portion to accept any more cards. Mr. McFarland, if you could introduce your team.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, Kevin McPartland, Associate Superintendent, for the record. I'm joined today by Pam Sloan, Director of Student Athletics and Activities, and Xavier Anthium, the Director of Student Athletics, who's especially excited to be here to present to you tonight. The Nevada Interscholastic Activities Association, or NIAA, is the governing body for all high school athletics and activities in the state. As CCSD trustees, you are responsible for the selection of six voting members of the NIAA Board of Control. The six voting members include one trustee, currently filled by trustee Cavassos, one executive position, currently Ms. Sloan, three high school principals, and one high school parent representative. This presentation is to provide you with our recommendation for the parent representative for your consideration. Madam President, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sloan.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, for the record, Pam Sloan. The Nevada Administrative Code, NAC 385B 106 through 110 mandates the inclusion of three high school parent guardian voting members to the NIAA Board of Control. Clark County School District is responsible for selecting one of the new members to serve on the board from October 31st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. In accordance with NAC 385B 110, the parent guardians selected must have a pupil who currently participates in a sanctioned sport and is not an employee or immediate family member of an employee of a public, private, or charter school. I would like to note that Deanna Riddle, whose son played football and ran track at Liberty High School, previously served in this position on the NIAA Board of Control until her son graduated in 2025. An interest survey was advertised via Board of, via the Board of School Trustees website, CCSD Facebook, CCSD Twitter platforms, the CCSD Wire, the CCSD Secondary Student Athletic and Activities Department Twitter account, the CCSD Weekly Parent League message, and individual high school social media accounts from August 1st, 2025 through August 15th, 2025. At this time, I would like to now turn it over to the presentation over Xavier Anthium.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ebert, at this time, I'd like to share the process that took place. We received 42 applications. Of those 42 applications, 21 met the initial criteria. Those who met the criteria were sent email from our athletics department to submit a letter of interest explaining why they wished to serve as a voting member of the NIA's Board of Control. 11 responses were received, from which the top five candidates were selected. These candidates are parents or guardians of high school athletes who are actively participating in sports and are able to serve the entire three-year term of the NIA. The top five parents or guardians were vetted through the Secondary Student Athletics and Activities Department in collaboration with Linda Cavassos, Board School Trustee, Dr. Jesse Welsh, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Kevin McPartland, Associate Superintendent, Education Services Division. Dr. Brian Freeman has met the criteria and is being, being recommended for appointment to the NIA Board of Control pending board approval. Currently, Dr. Freeman has a son who is a freshman Arbor View High School. His son is a member of the JV soccer team and will participate in track in the spring. I would like to read Dr. Freeman's letter of interest. "To whom it may concern, some lessons are taught, others are lived. I learned mine from my father who spent 30 years building a soccer club where every child had a place, no matter their skill, background, or ability to play. He knew that sports are not just about chasing a ball or scoring goals. They are about building character, creating belonging, and sometimes offering a lifeline. I watched him spend hours driving across town to pick up kits for practice and games. I saw him quietly cover league fees for families in need even when his money was tight. His commitment shaped my childhood and my values. Now, as a father of three boys, I understand the heart behind his work. For the past decade, I have coached my older son's teams, gaining firsthand experience with the dedication, planning, unseen effort that sustain youth athletics. I wanted today's children to have the same opportunities I was given, to grow through sports, to feel supported, and to be part of something bigger than themselves. As a second-generation Las Vegas native, I hold a deep connection to Nevada and its people. With my sons now participating in junior high and high school sports, I am eager to bring my knowledge, leadership, and passion to help strengthen athletic programs across our state. This role is more than an opportunity. It is a continuation of a legacy, one that began with my father and that I hope to carry forward for generations to come. Thank you for your consideration, Brian Freeman." At this time, we will pause and take any questions.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from trustees? Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. And I, so I just had a few questions. So with the, the 22 that qualified, what was the timeline for the deadline we gave them to come back and give back at their application?
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez, for the question. Yeah, so August 1st to August 15th was a timeline that they had to submit a, an application. And then upon receiving that, they had another additional two weeks to get that turned in to us.
And that was just email or phone call?
Correct, an email was sent.
And then when you did do the, when you received 11 back, how many got the, like, an interview? And what was, just generalized, what, what were the questions like for the interviews?
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez. The questions, there were no questions. It was a letter of interest that was submitted, and the letters were reviewed.
And is Mr. Freeman here today?
Thank you for your question. Mr. Freeman cannot be here this evening.
I, I, I'll have to say the elephant in the room again. I feel, I would be interested to know what his viewpoint is on men playing in women's sports. And so I would be interested to know his viewpoint on, on that piece.
Madam President, point of order.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, trustee Asparza Strofigan. Trustee Dominguez, I don't think that was part of the consideration for your evaluation on Mr. Freeman, right?
Yeah, thank you. There's, I think it pertains to this. I don't think it's off, off the tracks here. This is a group that is going to be, that develops policies for athletes. And we are going to be bringing in somebody who is going to be part of that voting committee. And I think that's an interesting thing for me to understand and know where that person stands on all these things.
I'm going to ask Single Counsel to also weigh in, but trustee Cavassos, since you sit on the committee, would you like to chime in?
Did you want me to weigh in with Counsel Chair Flee, whether I could go ahead and answer that, since that is not agendicized on this item?
It's not agendicized, but it, if it has to do with sports and what's on the agenda, you can comment. Yes.
I'm happy to answer it. Trustee Dominguez, since that has already been decided in a prior meeting by the board, it was already voted that what your, your concern is, is no longer, it's a moot issue now because it's already been voted on. So the parents coming in now already know what our policies are, and so they would already have to basically adhere to what's already been voted on, just like what would happen with our board.
Thank you for that clarity. With that said, trustee Dominguez, do you have another question?
Yeah, if I could ask, maybe trustee Cavassos can answer this. So for past, and just from my own knowledge, for past parents that have come in, is it a known thing we don't do, like an interview process with them? Or they just, we just do it by application?
On this process, what we do is the letter of interest. And as I think, I believe that Ms. Sloan basically explained, is what we did was, we had an incredible number of applications. I believe you said it was 42? 42. And then broken down and then vetted further. So there were not specific questions asked in an in-person interview, a phone interview. It was the letter of interest. So what was read to you on this letter of interest, and which is in the reference material, is basically their inclination for why they want to serve, kind of like with us, too. Like, if we have somebody that's going to be appointed to a committee, why do they want to serve? What is their interest besides, you know, meeting the minimum qualifications of having a student that is, you know, an athlete in the school? But as you saw from the letter that was read aloud here from Dr. Freeman, he's talking about his father's legacy. He's talking about that it's more than just chasing balls across the court, but that it's something where he's looking at being able to pass along, you know, a building of character and responsibility.
Mr. McPartland, do you want to, or Ms. Sloan, do you want to add anything?
Absolutely, I'd like to as well. Just to let you know, the first time, this is the second go-round for this position. The first time was four years ago when Deanna was nominated for the position. At that time, we only had two applicants. But the process in which we're doing now is the same as we did then.
And, and just, I guess, I want to highlight that this position is up until June of 2028. So, yeah. And so I think it's, you know, just to, I guess, just for my own, myself, I think that it's a little concerning. There wasn't, like, an interview and there, and also, Mr. Freeman isn't here. And, you know, this, these are very tedious meetings, as I've seen. And it does require complex meetings, and so they, they do require a lot of work. And I think it's, it's important to see that that person can fit into the schedule.
Thank you. Trustee Stevens.
I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, but I, I assume that the NIA has bylaws in how this is handled, right? And it, it would appear, because I'm trying to think, like, I'm listening to trustee Lydia here, and, sorry, I'm terrible with the whole trustee thing. Just call you by your first name. So I'm thinking about comparing our different committees. And when I think about, like, the BOC, I know that they have, like, there's a process there, and then it comes before the board and we vote on it. But I don't, I don't recall us ever interviewing those people. I just remember them being on a list similar to this, and then we just voted on it. I do understand where Lydia's coming from in terms of, like, you know, it, it's complex, but I think all of our committees have some complexities to them, and I would assume we just have to kind of trust the process. But it, I am assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, this follows bylaws for the NIA?
Thank you for the question, Kevin McPartland. It, it does follow the bylaws. It's the way it was done before. The applicants are aware of the schedule and the cadence of the meetings, and that some are actually up in the north and some are here. So all of that is part of the process when they apply.
Trustee Cavassos.
I just wanted to state, because there has been a lot of confusion, a lot of questions about this. You know, we have two parent representatives right now. We have one that represents Region 1. We have another person that represents Regions 2 and 3. And so this is our Southern Nevada representative. And so right now, because Ms. Riddle's son did graduate and is no longer eligible for this, we, if we do not basically appoint somebody to this position, this district is not represented on the NIA. And one thing that I do want to bring up is that we've had so many inquiries about parent representation, parent involvement, and the parent voices that we have had. And we don't always all agree, just like we don't agree here. We have had an incredible perspective brought to our board from the parents because they're out there in the trenches. They're the parents that are running their kids to practices and having to, you know, adjust their schedules. And they have done an incredible job. So I, I think that, I want to commend our staff for doing the hardest part of the work. I was brought in at the end, and I got to do, you know, basically the final vetting with them and collaboration with them. And they did an incredible job of recruiting because 41 applications. And this is four quarterly meetings. Our next one is in January. They are two-day meetings, and sometimes they're longer than other times, but it's an incredible an incredible investment of time, and it's a completely volunteer position. So I just want to point out the importance of the parent perspective and being involved.
Thank you, Trustee Biassadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to add that I would have appreciated a small presentation of the NIAA's Board of Control, to see how far that control extends to, the magnitude of the decisions, if something does come across before you, whether you approve or decline of a boy or a girl representing themselves in a different gender, if they'd be allowed to play in whatever, you know, team they decided to, opposing their biological gender. Is that something that would come before your, your team here?
That's not the agenda, but so that, we could have another conversation, since that's not part of the agenda. Because we're here to approve, approve or disapprove of an application for a parent or guardian. So I will ask trustee Barron, do you have a question?
Yeah, actually, yeah, maybe either legal or perhaps the superintendent. We have a number of boards that are made up, where we have working groups that are presented. It's a streamlined way. I know I myself would not want to have a parade of a dozen or more applicants coming here. We already have enough stuff on our work sessions. We already have enough, I mean, we're already here till almost 8 o'clock on this. We have a representative on this board that represents this board in the selection. And I thank you very much for actually being a part of that, trustee Cabasos. And we already have other, I mean, the work is done for us, and the way this process works, as it is, as it does with other boards that we have, the boards do the work, they've done the selection, they bring it here to either be approved or not approved. Is that not the case? I know that's kind of a long question, but is that not the case, in which we do? We already, this board already, it being served with this oversight, and we have representation in the selection through our calling trustee. Is that not the case?
Yes, and I think that's what the point of clarification is, that this is a state, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McPartland, this is a state association. We are a part of it. We don't control it, like the Board of County Commissioners, trustee Biassadi, and the other committees that we have in our jurisdiction. We are a part of this state association. So we don't own it, we don't control it. We get to appoint a trustee, and then also an application for a parent.
Yeah, I would trust very much that the people who have been a part of this, a part of this board, and who representatives have already vetted and gone through, and this election is in alignment with the policies that the NIAA has set up for its members. Is that not, is that not the case?
That is the case.
Thank you, trustee.
That's my stamp.
Thank you, trustee Asparza Stroffigan.
I silenced myself. Okay. I have really one question, Ms. Sloan. How many times have you done this process?
For this current position, this is the second time.
The second time that we're putting a parent?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I mean, this process has been done before. It's not anything new. Do other districts do the similar process? Are you aware?
How they get to the outcome, I do not know, but I do know it has to be board-approved by the board.
So every, every other district has board approval and has a process to vet through?
That is correct.
And likely has representation from the board and also representation from the staff. And I just ask you how many times, because how many, I feel like, I want to reiterate what trustee Stevens said, is we trust the process and we trust your judgment. And the fact that we have so many candidates is a good situation to have. So that means you really vetted through all of the people that were there. And when it comes to NIAA, issues are not singular. There are many vast situations and circumstances that come across with sports and athletics. I, you're chuckling, and yes, there's a lot of, lot of situations that come up, and that's why we have to adhere to the regs and the policy. So I want to leave it there, and then I know there might be other comments or questions, but I'm ready to make a motion, President, when ready.
Thank you. I know we still have other public comment, but trustee Stevens.
I'd like to call the question.
All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and move to public comment. We have some individuals signed up. Stevens, trustee Henry.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, the term for this parent is through 2028?
That is correct.
That is correct. And we've called the question, trustee Henry, so that's why I'm going to public comment. So I don't know if that was clear when I said it, but I hope you got your question answered. Steven Perry, are you still interested in providing comment? Okay. And then Joseph, I hope I say your last name right. Yes, please come forward. We have two. And then I have another individual. Yeah, you could.
I want to please on that comment.
Yes, I saw your beautiful wife, she is right after you. And then I also have Chad and Amy Ellsworth. Are you still in the room? Do you want to come up together each, or do you want to do together? Okay, I'll, I'll come back to you. So, Mr. Perry, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Steven Perry. I'm a parent.
Wait, I don't think your mic is on, did it? There you go.
There we go.
There we go.
Test, test, there we go. My name is Steve Perry. I'm a parent of a high school athlete at a local high school at Foothill. One of the things that I'd like to address is the fact that, trustee Adams, you said that you guys do not control the NIAA, correct?
Yes, sir.
But you choose to be a part of it, even after the fiasco with the playoffs. The fact that charter schools are building these sports juggernauts, there's a charter school that's been in existence for two years, who is the fourth-rated team in Nevada, pretty close. They will roll in 4A. They don't subscribe to the same transfer rules that CCSD schools have to subscribe to. They can transfer kids in and play that next week. However, if a CCSD school does that, they are on probation, or the coach gets fired. Our kids have to wait 180 days.
Madam President?
They could.
Please pause his time for a second, I'm sorry. So trustee, just as a reminder, we cannot, we are here to listen to public comment, and I answered Mr. Perry, and I shouldn't, my apologies, but we're here to listen.
I won't answer.
So, yes, please continue, Mr. Perry.
They can reclass, parents can choose to reclass their students, which is the equivalent of a college redshirt. So students can then play at a different age level. They can be 15 playing 14-year-old sports, things of that nature. The playing field is not level. You've got two charter schools that come to mind. Can I name them? Do you know? Slam Academy, a wrestling juggernaut. It's literally named Slam. And then Pinecrest Sloane Canyon, who in its two years of existence cleared 15 transfers last year from other schools, from comprehensive schools, to come in. And earlier in the season, they beat Foothill, who's now in the open division, playing Gorman by double digits. Playing field has to be level if you want to, A, keep students in comprehensive schools, and B, make competition, the competitive atmosphere better. Because right now, it's falling. That's it.
Thank you. Mr.?
Farrar.
Farrar. And then after you, your beautiful wife, she could come up to the left.
Hi, my name is Joseph Farrar. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, superintendent. I'm here to speak about the debacle surrounding the NIAA's oversight of the postseason football brackets, specifically 5A and open divisions. We do need parent representation on the NIAA board who can speak for families across all Nevada athletics. Very briefly, I worked for six years at the Clark County Recorder's Office with the recorder Debbie Conway, and at the Clark County Clerk's Office with Clerk Lingoa for four years. My role as a consultant was to-
Mr. Farrar, can I pause you just for a second? This is on 5.02, and just the application for the individual, but I think that, I just want to make sure you're, I'm clear, you want to address maybe some issues that are associated with NIAA. Is that accurate? Or do you have a-
And the parent representation, yeah.
And the parent presentation, so do you have-
Representation.
Representation. Do you have anything specifically on the application being proposed by, of Mr. Freeman? Is there anything on that?
It's very similar to what Mr. Perry just said, too.
Okay. And so my fault to have Mr. Perry, I think that you guys are addressing some issues that you have with NIAA, but is there, there's nothing specific on the application of Mr. Freeman that you want to address? Because then I still want to hear you, but I'm going to move you to another section, which is just public comment on items not listed as action.
Yeah, I mean, it is about the people that are being elected to parent representation, so I can switch to that topic.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm going to now start your time back up.
No, you can keep it where it is, because obviously I didn't prepare to switch the topic, but I will still address that issue. So when it comes to the applicant for NIAA, as spoken about by trustee Dominguez, there was no interview process, there was no discussion, no one came in, there was no thorough follow-through. So they went through a very minimal process to be elected. And it's important that we do have people that are committed to be on the NIAA as a parent, because there are situations that do happen across all athletics in the state of Nevada, the least of which is most recently, again, the football postseason debacle. So a parent that is at Arbor View and is on the board is going to have a vested interest when they have a student that's playing a sport in NIAA, including when their school is perhaps disadvantaged by an imbalanced ranking system that had never been tested before, and actually seeded Arbor View in third place versus second place. A parent at that school who is on the board might actually know this, might actually be able to help assist in that process because they're close to the situation. And as we speak, Arbor View is reaching out to go ahead and adjust the way that is, because the math doesn't make sense. So, again, I do think it's important, because a person like Dr. Freeman is closer to the issue, and he might understand it better, and might be able to represent the board better when those situations happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I would love to know how to pronounce your first name, but I'm also going to have Chad and Amy Ellsworth, if you guys want to come forth.
We're for the same issue, we can be moved to the-
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much for understanding our guidelines. And please pronounce your first name, and you could proceed.
Okay. I don't know if it's on. My name is Kira Farrar, and I, too, am here for the same issue, but I want to speak regarding trustee Dominguez. And it seems as though we very quickly passed over the importance of the parent representation on a committee like this, because decisions that are made impact the student safety of players in the Southern Division of Nevada, who do not get to say they don't want to play schools such as Bishop Gorman. Currently, Bishop Gorman is the dangerous school to play, and there was one seat in the playoffs that nobody wanted, because they knew that was the first game of the playoffs, and they were essentially going to be out, if not injured. And I feel like there is a lack of understanding of why it's so important that there is a parent represented on the board who understands the divisions and the inequity when it comes to a private or a charter school, who then people will funnel their kids to those schools who don't have to follow the same rules. So essentially, if I held my kid back in a younger age category, like elementary or middle school, CCSD took a hard stand on that over the summer, which I applaud. However, that hard stand doesn't seem to have transferred to charter schools and private schools. And the reason that should impact CCSD voting members or anybody with a concern is, we have a decrease in numbers, and we can cast aside the importance of athletics, but the reality is, for some of these kids, athletics is the only reason they show up for school. The only reason they continue to apply themselves and get good grades is so they can show up in whatever sport they thrive in. And so to place them in a category where they know they worked all season, they show up an hour before school when all the other kids are not there yet, to work so hard for what they understood to be a fair shot, only to be ripped away at the last second, parent representation matters. Our children are being thrown into situations that all of Northern Nevada refuses to put their children in, but when it comes to Southern Nevada, our coaches and our players are threatened with suspension for a year of coaching or inability to play in the next year's playoffs if they take a stand. And that is why we think it is so important that parents need to be represented for all of Southern Nevada, not just whoever they decided, and that's why I think the process should be more transparent. Yes, they've received, what, 40 applications? They narrowed it down to 20? But why was nobody else included? Just because we aren't sitting on the board, or we're not allowed to sit on the board or qualified, does not mean we do not get an opinion or a say in important decisions. And I personally think that CCSD board, in general, should take more of a stand about why we're participating in the NIAA, and really truly understand the decisions they're making, and the injuries that children are facing, and the inequalities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, then, trustee Asparza Stroffigan, do you want to make a motion?
I do, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for accepting 5.02, application for the parent or guardian to serve on the NIAA Activities Association Board of Control as presented.
Thank you. Trustee Cabasos?
Yes, I will second that motion.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
That motion passes 5 to 2. We'll next go to item number 5.03, Compliance Monitoring Update. Before I open that and invite Mrs. Keen to come forward, is there anybody that did not complete a public speaker card for this item?
Do we have any? So far.
Okay, I don't see anybody. So then that public, the public speaker part, speaker card process is closed. Ms. Keen and our new CFO, if you'd like to proceed.
Good afternoon or good evening. President Bustamante Adams, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Ebert. I am Yolanda King, and I am the compliance monitor for the Clark County School District. And joined with me today is Mr. Justin DeHauff, as you noted, the Chief Financial Officer for the school district. And we are here today to present to you the October update on the Clark County School District's corrective action plan. And also, we would like to introduce to you some strategic initiatives, it's late, strategic initiatives, that will further enhance the long-term financial stability and sustainability, and also assistance fiscal planning, as well as educational priorities that are tied together. So as a reminder, with regard to the corrective action plan, the corrective action plan originally started out as 29 action steps. In August, 22 of those action steps were deemed complete, with the remaining seven that were identified as partially complete or incomplete. In September, two of the remaining action steps were officially marked as complete. And I also want to note that those remaining seven action steps, most of them were contingent upon hiring of the Chief Financial Officer, and so hence the reason we are here today, and we're here to report to you, that the remaining five action steps have been completed, successfully completed, and this would mark a successful closeout of the corrective action plan. The completion of the corrective action plan has been communicated to, at the time, it was last week, Superintendent Dr. Canavera, interim Superintendent Dr. Canavera, and then also reported and spoke with the incoming Superintendent Dr. Wakefield. So both have been, this information has been reported to them. And then I believe a couple days ago, Dr. Wakefield has presented to the Clark County School District a formal letter that is declaring that the Clark County School District- School District a formal letter that is declaring that the Clark County School District has successfully completed all the required steps that were in the corrective action plan. So I just wanted to make sure I noted that for the record for you. So as we move forward, and now that we have reached the closeout of the corrective action plan, Mr. DeHauff and I would like to highlight how the district is building on this momentum, specifically to drive long-term improvements in financial management, as well as school budgeting. I am so happy, pleased to report that under Mr. DeHauff's leadership, he is definitely moving in the right direction with strengthening the business and the finance unit through modernizing the structure, the system, as well as people. These initiatives will include, and already have included some portion of the modernization is in the fact that he has been and will continue to evaluate the functions of the staffing of the entire business and finance unit, and not just the budget office that was originally kind of focused in the corrective action plan. In addition to that, he will be completing a comprehensive inventory of all those functions within the business and finance unit, and then in ensuring that those staff workloads and processes are aligned with the core priorities of the district. Also, what's exciting to report is his ongoing initiative to continue to bolster that cross-functional coordination within the business and finance unit, as well as outside at the BFU. And so that's further approving upon breaking the silos that the district has been working on since we started this process, and then hopefully to continue eliminating any redundancies that we may or may not have amongst other departments, as well as within the business and finance unit. Also, what's important is as Mr. DeHauff continues to provide structural, as well as these organizational improvements, within the business and finance unit, these improvements will continue to evolve. Most importantly, I think, to highlight here is that with the evolution of these process improvements, and continuing to evaluate what the functions look like, is that he will be offer, or not offering, but he will be providing for the school district efforts to modernize the progress monitoring tools, and to improve upon the internal accountability tracking systems. So you may remember that in previous reports that I've mentioned in the past, that the processes have been manually, tracking of school budgets have been a manual process. And also, I've noted in the past that schools are using data that they independently pull from the district's financial system, which means they're creating their own reports to determine and monitor what they're spending. So there's inconsistency amongst the school district with regard to the monitoring and evaluating how that spending is occurring. So in the very near future here, Mr. DeHauff and his team will be implementing an automated progress monitoring report to include dashboards. This will allow for the district to have standardized financial tracking for all schools. It will also enhance the budget oversight of school budgets throughout the entire fiscal year by pulling, being able to, you know, real-time pull those reports and evaluate what's going on within their schools, as well as the spending. This obviously would reinforce accountability and outcome-based management, as well as improving the accuracy and the transparency of any financial data, specifically through having those dashboards up and available for those in the district. The next initiative that I would like to highlight for you is there's been really, what I believe has been significant progress on turning the compliance piece of it into long-term financial resiliency. And this is particularly related to allocating funds to meet the district's liability reserves. And so we talked about this, I believe, a couple months ago, as it relates to the insurance and the risk management fund. So he and I have analyzed that insurance and risk management fund to include all of the active, as well as those potential liability claims that may exist in the future. And we've determined an appropriate allocation amount that would help the district to achieve the maximum amount with regard to meeting the liability impacts that may occur in the future with the district. So based on this allocation or this recommendation, we are recommending as a three-year phased approach, which would be over a three-year period. And this three-year period is intended really to minimize any budgetary disruptions or fluctuations in budget that may occur with, you know, trying to implement or include or increase allocation for budget, for budgeting purposes. It is really important to note that the recommended increase that we talked about with the risk and liability fund is that this does not affect the, it does not really, it does not place additional burdens on the schools, particularly because the assessment is, is a direct assessment that's on the general fund. It's not an assessment that is allocated to the schools. And so this particular assessment is just in reference to the general fund. Also, we want to make note that with this recommendation, there has been what we're calling an off-ramp threshold in this policy with the allocation of the funds over the three-year period. We want to make sure that if there are any surpluses that are accumulated as a result of the increase of allocating funds to the, to this, to this insurance fund, risk and insurance fund, we want to make sure that if there's any surpluses that tend to accumulate or may accumulate over a period of time, that those surpluses then go back to the general fund from which they originated from. So I think that's an important piece of the policy that we, that should be recognized. So in closing here, the result is that implementing these types of adjustments will assure that the insurance and the risk management funds, that they remain financially stable, that it's transparent in what we're doing with the allocation, and that, most importantly, it's sustainable to meet any current, as well as future liability needs, liability obligations within that fund. So at this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. DeHauff to provide an update on, I think, a very exciting strategic initiative that he, that is currently underway regarding the school allocation funding formula. We felt it was important to highlight that at this meeting, and as well as, you know, the work that's going on, and most importantly, so that you're informed with what's going on with the school allocation budget and the modernization of that. So at this point, Mr. DeHauff?
Thank you, Madam President, members, and Superintendent Ebert. As Ms. King said, one of the opportunities that we have now, as we springboard from the work that the district has been doing with Ms. King and with the team, is to take a look at what strategic budgeting process looks like, and to address concerns that we have heard throughout the process this past year, and moving forward, including from our principals, that come with the wake of our current formula. And to be clear, when I talk about our formula here, I'm not talking about the pupil-centered funding plan, I'm not talking about Nevada's formula. I'm talking about the formula that we use within our district to allocate funds out to schools, right? The method that we use to get to that 85-15 threshold that's in the law. Currently, the formula that we use within the district was built when that formula was introduced, which now is a number of years ago. And as a result, as quickly as economic conditions have changed, so too have the underlying assumptions that were built into that formula, which while true at the time, do require reevaluation over time, is the underlying, again, the assumptions around inflation, around average class size, around average school size, have changed since the time that this was implemented. As a result, that creates challenges for principals within the funds that they receive, because those formula assumptions don't necessarily tie to what's happening in practice. That coupled with the formula that currently uses an allocation that changes every cycle and year over year. So we currently, within our formula, implement a base adjustment that adjusts each spring to the fall, as we move from a projected to actual numbers. And then again, each cycle, fiscal year to fiscal year, as we understand and determine what our revenue is, and update the formula each year. That creates uncertainty for our schools, for our principals. They don't have a predictable value on which they can rely, or even begin to plan for. That becomes particularly challenging, as we've talked about with declining enrollment and other conditions, that become even more critical for them to have insight and ability to look ahead. Senate Bill 460 has allowed us the opportunity to modernize this, to do so with transparency. And so what I want to talk about now is both acknowledging the challenges that exist, yielding the moment to move forward, and to do so expeditiously, recognizing, too, that every moment is an opportunity. So how are we going to do this work of modernization? And I want to be clear, too, about what our vision is in our guiding principle, guiding principle, I suppose, pun intended there, since we have guiding principles as a part of this work. We're going to build a transparent, predictable, and student-need-driven funding system that still empowers our principals, while also ensuring our schools can best deliver on our core commitments. What promise that we have made to principals, and this is information that we have shared with our principals directly, is that they should know their base funding amount upfront, they should receive differentiated professional learning, and as Ms. King spoke about, also resources and support and tools to be successful in their role. We recognize that principals have long been the instructional leaders of their school building. We ask them now to often be the CFOs of their school building as well, despite the fact that that may not be the training that they came up through. So how can we support that? But also, how can we recognize the strength and skill they bring, give them voice, make sure that they're an active role in these committees and work groups in engaging the formula? I'll talk in a second about what we're doing, but again, working towards that predictability, making sure that our resources are aligned to those commitments that we have, that they're predictable, not shifting alongside each budget cycle. So what have we told principals that looks like for this year? What do we mean when we talk about formula modernization? And when? So when we talk about fiscal year 2027, and again, I know we spent a lot of time, and we're going to talk about our fiscal 2026 amended final budget here upcoming, but nonetheless, we are already, already in fiscal 2027 budget season, so welcome, everybody, to fiscal 2027. And as a part of that work, those formulas in the original allocations go out early in the spring, so we are fast at work to make these, not just words, to make these actions. So three main components that we've talked about with the principals for, and all of our community for the spring, regarding the formula itself. We will have, for this January, our current upcoming iteration of the formula, a fixed, clear base per pupil, that does not change spring to fall. We will be removing a component of the current formula, it's called stratification. We'll be removing another component of the formula called proportionality, and I want to be really clear as well with what I mean by both of those. Stratification in the current formula is something that offsets that base number that we give to principals. So if you'll pardon me for a second, when I think about our formula, currently, our formula is a weighted formula, meaning we provide fixed amount, and then weights on top of that based on different school and student characteristics. Again, similar to how the pupil-centered funding plan functions, though different, because again, it's the CCSD resource allocation formula, so different type of formula. In that formula, instead of just giving a base and then applying weights on top of it, we provide a base, and then we adjust, we differentiate our base per pupil based on a number of different school and student characteristics. That creates confusion, and it can also lower the base below 100%, which creates further confusion for principals. So what we are suggesting here is not to remove the fundamental pieces of the formula itself, and not to create that concern for principals that the components that are reflected in the stratification are gone, but to instead pull them out and shine some flashlight on those to make it clear that there is a fixed base. If we are going to use a food metaphor, that we have a pizza crust that every school has, that they can bake from, they all use the same pizza crust. But schools might have a different-sized pizza, and they might have different toppings on that pizza. But we are going to rebake the crust once that's been issued. We'll have a fixed base per pupil. Proportionality is similar in function to stratification. It's an adjustment to the formula that exists currently. That's something that was changed in the Senate Bill 460. It referred to a piece of the law where, up until this year, specialty schools had to receive funding that was proportionate, hence proportionality, to the funding that they received as an overall share of their funding on May 8th, 2017. That date was fixed in law. As you can imagine, as we talked about with the underlying conditions for the formula, so too have how we fund and manage and construct the programs and the programming models, even within those specialty schools. And so that change allows us to work with our principals to update the allocation formula for those schools. Separately, though related, fiscal year 2027, we also are going to, when it comes to average salaries, reflect those by grade structure, to reflect the nuance that comes when teachers and, when principals are working with their budgets, that they see those salaries more clearly. And then also, working across the entirety of the fiscal year timeline. We talk about our spring budget cycle, we talk about fall budget, but it's all one big piece of fiscal 2027. And so how do we think holistically about that budget, work with our partners across teams, not just within business and finance, to make sure that our timelines do not conflict with, or do not forget to consider important deadlines, screening timelines, other reminders that exist within the system, and that have consequences on matters of school funding? How are we going to get there? Starting with formula-specific work groups, those are work groups consisting of our principals, who are in it and who reflect a variety of perspectives and viewpoints, and programmatic needs. We currently have five active work groups. We had more than 65 principals, our volunteer, not volantel, volunteer to participate in that work. We were able to fully have at least six to 10 principals within each group as it relates to those different work groups. Specifically here, we have one for international baccalaureate, magnet programs, comprehensives, rural schools, small schools, as well as our CTAs, to make sure that we can understand what are the programmatic expectations at those schools. So we also, when we're talking about resourcing, we're not doing so in a vacuum, because at the end of the day, it's about student need. How do we center this on moving the needle for kids? Those are underway now. Each session, each group will have at least two meetings before the new year, one to talk to define parameters, another one to come back to look at actual numbers and options and scenarios, so that we together can look and review as a team, recognizing that there are scarce resources. At the end of the day, we don't set our pie, our, forgive me for going back to another food metaphor here, but we don't set our total revenue pie as a district, but we do have to slice it. So how do we make those decisions and do so in service of the, both the competing needs that exist within resource constraint, but also reflect the true programmatic and instructional expectations of our principals and of our schools in continuing to strive towards the Core Four? And it is a challenge, but it is one that we are doing together and openly with our principals. All of this, of course, in service of continuing to move towards fiscal year 2028. So we talked about 2027 already. We're talking about 2028, too. Why not? So we're scheduling our groups all the way through 2027. We know that this is just the beginning of the work to come. This is about modernization and transparency specifically around the formula, so that we can make those broader efforts toward continued transparency, continuing to drive resources to meet student need. And that concludes the presentation today.
Before we go to questions, in closing, I really would like to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Ebert. She was the, the one who appointed me as the compliance monitor when she was Superintendent of Public Education, and I just hope that throughout this process, that I was able to help in addressing and assisting, providing oversight and guidance to the school district, and making sure that, for sure, that we're even better today with accountability, as well as transparency. So I just wanted to formally thank Ms. Ebert for the opportunity to work with the school district. It has been a great, a great appointment, and I've truly enjoyed it.
Awesome. Thank you so much, both of you. Trustee Henry, I'm going to start with you first on questions, but other trustees, please put yourself in the queue. Madam Superintendent Ebert, I see that, would you like to say something? Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'll go ahead and close it out.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Trustee Henry, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions, but I do just want to thank, oh, thank you so much, Ms. King, for, for guiding us through this entire process. I've learned so much, and I'm sure the things that have been set in place will strengthen our district as well.
Trustee Cavazos?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just want to state, for the record, our appreciation to you, Ms. King, and to you, Mr. DeHauff, and working together with her. And I do appreciate the pizza analogy, that is something I can identify with in a lot of people. I just want to say that it has always been very respectful from both of you, in pointing out where we needed to improve, where we were excelling, and especially today with, where we have met those, we have met those expectations. And going forward, I have hope that we can avoid some of the issues that we had in the past, so I just want to thank you for being so intentional, I want to use that word tonight, so being so intentional about what we need to do to improve and to go forward. So thank you both, again, for the pizza. So thank you both again for the pizza, no anchovies.
Thank you. Trustee Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to applaud you for completing all of the corrective actions that we had here and so to the entire team. So that's amazing, and I really want to applaud for the teamwork you both have had for the district. It has been a tremendous amount of work, and I know it was, it was a lot to come into this district, and I really appreciated that you came in with an open heart and you both worked together and you not only figured out and identified the issues, but put us on a corrective plan, a clear path back to making sure that we are not only in compliance, but also making sure that we're just structured as a district. My question is, and I want to just go back to our briefing, because again, the briefing was really extensive too, is I want to make sure that when you were talking about the dashboard and all of these resources, what are the resources for the SOTs?
So and if I could also, for this one, phone a friend on Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez, but we have issued as part of this SOT discussion guidance. And I want to note too that that guidance, I think, provides consistency for our schools and for our SOTs as they engage in that work. It need not be the end-all, be-all, right? We are still navigating this work with our SOTs.
Thank you. And while we wait, I did want to add, I really hope our SOTs take advantage of all of this assistance and resources, because it wasn't there before. So I really hope that they, if they're watching, go ahead and really reach out to get the help they need.
Felicia Gonzalez for the record. So in relation to the school organizational teams, every year, it is a requirement that principals provide trainings. We recently just released to them a PowerPoint that they could utilize to train the school organizational teams, and also there's documents. And the school board trustees will be receiving a very similar training. Along those lines, because there is going to be a different way of how we, how we budget at the school level, it's going to be, it's going to look differently. So we will make sure that we are preparing all of our principals when it comes time to roll it out, so that the school organizational teams can understand the budgets, understand the pizza process.
Thank you. I like the pie reference, because it is close to Thanksgiving, so, but I, and I do want, if we could just, on a macro level, look at the dashboard that's going to be processed here and kind of how that's going to assist principals and even the SOTs.
Sure. So thank you, trustee, for the question. One of the goals of the dashboard, and Ms. King spoke about one of the challenges we see in that, different data at different times and different perspectives. And we've worked to and will continue to work to make sure that our principals have access to our enterprise resource planning systems, which are our underlying accounting systems. That's a source of truth. They have to be able to trust but verify. We want to continue to empower them to do that. And we want to make sure that in addition to that, they have the ability to look at their financial information, to know from a budgeted-to-spend perspective, if I'm getting a sip of coffee in the morning, how, where am I at with my non-salary instructional supplies? Where am I at with my special education salaries at this point in the year? And where does that look for my historical spend? And to know that all of our principals are looking at that information in the same way that we see it, so that when we're trying to help and resolve that question, we're all speaking the same language, coming from the same point, so that we also understand too what we're looking at when we're having that conversation in the first place. And if I could add too, the other piece of that is making sure that that information is not necessarily presented always in financial jargon, as much as account codes are fantastic, and account codes for the record are fantastic. They don't always tell us in that sequence of numbers, just looking at those numbers, how rich they are in terms of the information in them. And without getting too in the weeds here on account codes, account codes, for example, are made of different pieces, different dimensions and segments, all have plain English names on them, like supplies and materials, special education spending, instructional salaries. So we have the information to show them their information in plain English, to avoid having to crosswalk account codes, to group that, to make that more useful, to bring utility to that data, to their work.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comment about the codes, because I do recall a parent mentioning that during his, I think it was during our superintendent review, they were gaining community engagement meetings on that, and one of the things they mentioned was, we have all these codes, we have no idea what they're, where's the money going? And so I really appreciate you breaking that down for everybody, so thank you.
Trustee Stevens.
All right. This is awesome. I'm looking at page eight, and I remember when I first got in this role, I had some very passionate parents from one of my high schools reaching out, and they were all talking about the same thing. They were saying, hey, we don't understand the formula, because what we, we're a Genet High School, and we found out that we're like 92% funded, and some of our funds are going to this high school over there, that's a magnet or whatever. So at the time, we had a different superintendent in place, and I remember asking her about this, and she used this word, stratification. And so what I'm trying, and she even admitted, like, this is a tough thing to figure out. So the fact that we're here today and it looks like you're removing the stratification, I'm trying to better understand, does that mean that it, if it, does that mean that the complaint that I was hearing from those parents, that that essentially goes away, or it doesn't? Like, if it really, if the funding really follows the student, should that school then be at 100% if they have 100% enrollment? Is that?
Thank you, trustee. So yes, the idea here behind having that fixed per pupil is that every student gets the base, right? The idea of, in concept formulaically, is that a base reflects the average cost per pupil that a school would need at an average enrollment to generate the resources that that school would need to purchase the supplies, materials, people, and time to fund students who don't otherwise have other needs. No GATE, no ELL, no at-risk, right? That sort of at its core, oversimplified, but at its core is what that basis is. And so yes, the goal here is to take out, and again, not to eliminate them from the formula, right? So school size, there's a school size adjustment that's currently in the stratification. The goal is not to remove the school size adjustment, but to properly articulate and place a school size adjustment, a supplemental to a base, not something that takes away from the base.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. And I also love the pizza thing. It was very helpful for us non-finance people.
Trustee Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you very much for a very articulate report. I think I appreciate the new empowerment and the training, of course, to our building supervisors, who although I myself, I have, I have an administrative degree, I never took the plunge, quite frankly, because I was daunted by the budget process, and I'll just, I'll say it that far. My smarter sisters, though, you know, they know how to handle that kind of stuff, so I'd just leave it to them. I do have, I do have a question. So I'm still kind of left, because it seems like in some of the schools on my side of town, we still have a certain level of transience, where, you know, we'll still have a certain amount, and it's more than just a dozen students. It might be a few dozen students who, they just seemingly disappear. When we went out with our Reclaim Your Future Walk, we personally knocked on a few doors there, and there were just people that, oh yeah, they went back to Tennessee, or hey, this person, they went to go live with their dad, right? Have we figured out a way to compensate for those particular, I mean, do we have any, or I know you're a pretty smart guy, you're pretty much up on everything to deal with technology. Do we have any sort of predictive AI or any other tools to help us, you know, try to help compensate for those variables that, although, you know, overall for our district, it's actually a very small amount, but it's still kind of important for some schools that are kind of vulnerable anyhow? And I'll just point out, I guess I just saw from our HR, we only had, I think, 0.003% of our teachers that wound up having to get ripped, which is amazing. That's a, our HR team should be applauded for that one, you know, because, it's about six individuals out of 18,000 teachers. So that's actually pretty amazing, right? But in the end, for some of our schools that are a little bit more challenged, do we have any way to predict a little bit more with these specific variations that account for it? I know that's a heck of a question.
Thank you for the question, trustee. I think in terms of the ability to predict and in terms of the project timeline for fiscal '27 and fiscal '28, I think that whether and to what extent different enrollment subgroups and their change year over year, and whether and to what extent that change is both predictable overall or even at site level, would be something that would be worth considering, but for potentially the 2028 formula revision in that, when we're talking about bringing transparency and clarity, right now, we're talking about focusing on the building blocks of the formula itself, not necessarily making substantive or major adjustments around, but to just bring in, to shine the light on, again, what have we been doing? How do we identify and make clear what it is we're doing now, and to also better reflect that with the instructional and staffing models in the schools we have? And then to take a look at, how do we understand where our enrollment patterns are going and how that's changing the distribution of need across the district? To your point, trustee, there are districts, when you think about weighted student funding formulas at the district level, districts choose to grapple with this in different ways. There are some districts who will use, like we do, an English-language learner weight, some districts, but the English-language learner does not equal transience, right? And so there are districts who will use students with limited or interrupted formal education as an indicator within their formulas, or just transience in general. Those specific indicators aren't within our existing formula as an additive weight. Right now, understanding where our populations are and where they're going, I think, becomes most critical to then getting our head around what that looks like for actually adjusting to the trends.
Thank you. Tressia Sparsas-Stroffigan.
Please don't talk about pizza. Some people have not had dinner, so anyways, okay. So it's been said, thank you. One thing I do try to do in visiting some of our schools, very consciously asking, like I just did, like, what is it that, you know, you need? And of course, funding is the thing. So I appreciate that you, number one, the practice in the past was that certain individuals were included at the table. You said 65 or 60, 65 principals requested to be a part of the process, and all of them are a part of the process, is that correct?
Not all of them are a part of the resource allocation work groups. However, for those that we couldn't, because of the volume of interest, we've extended an open invitation to the monthly principal budget committee, where they can add, contribute, and take part, so that we are in no way gatekeeping access to the process.
And I think that goes a long way with our previous issues of the lack of transparency and then the communication that wasn't happening. So here's my question, you answered all my questions in the briefing, but I had one that doesn't relate to the categories, and I said I wasn't going to surprise you. One of the constant issues that people are always sharing at schools is special education. So I really would say, and I'm asking as an individual, what are we looking at when that budget? I just would like to know for our schools, and they want to know. The units are increasing at some of our schools, I'm looking at some of our elementary schools, that, we heard it tonight, like staffing is right there, and how do they maintain the resources? And there's not enough pizza. There's just not enough pizza to go around. So, but I want to put that on record, that I think we need to also dive deep into how much our resources are and what things do actually cost for special ed programming. I just want to put that in as an ask.
Thank you. Vice President Samora.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one quick question to the deputy superintendent. You mentioned that principals received one PowerPoint for the trainings on the SOTs. Yes?
That is, that is correct, Vice President.
Okay. And what kind of level is that training at? Because I know that we previously have, I called it a bible, because that's how they referred it, to some of the SOT members, and they really enjoyed it, but I was getting that feedback from members who have been on an SOT for years, right? So they know what to look for, they know what they needed. This training that we just sent out, is it going to be just really broad and an umbrella, or are we thinking of expanding that at different types of levels for someone who's just coming in and has no idea what SOT does, or is it going to be just curious what the future will look like for that training?
Thank you for the question, Felicia Gonzalez for the record. So that, it is, it is, it's a, it is a relatively broad training, however, it truly follows what is on the website. So it's a training where you use, you go to the reorg.ccsd website, and so for every section, it takes you through how SOTs are formed, how you vote, et cetera. And it takes you to that section on the website, so that an SOT member knows how to navigate and look for information on the website. And if there are additional questions, they could always follow up with the president, oh, excuse me, with the principal.
One more question, as we're looking ahead of all this, do you think there will be opportunities for possible some type of mentorships from, you know, veteran SOT members down to new members to kind of guide them through?
Thank you for that question. That is not something that we've explored, we can take a look at it. Just kind of thinking, once again, it's challenging, because each school site, every principal already has challenges related to schedules and scheduling of SOT, SOT, SOT meetings. And so it would be, it might be challenging, and to tell you the truth, we don't centrally, we do not have the personnel. We have Aaron Franchers, a party of one, that actually helps, helps facilitate everything related to the compliance and providing of the materials and the support that's needed for principals. And so that would be incumbent on the, on the principals to have to work with another site to help develop that type of mentorship.
Thank you. It was just an idea, and I do want to thank you both, especially, you know, Ms. King. I feel like you came in, and, I mean, this was a big monster. I wish I would have seen your face when you saw the spreadsheet with our budget, because that was hard for me to hear. So I can't imagine how you took that on, but I thank you for all the work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Ebert, would you like to close this out?
Thank you. Yes, I'd love to close you out, close this whole team out in conversation. But first and foremost, real huge kudos. I know Ms. King was louting many people, but, you know, she came right in, looked across a $4 billion budget, quickly honed in on those pieces that needed to be addressed, you know, based on the compliance report that was expected for the state. I also want to lift her up, because she is a Rancho High School graduate, right? CCSD graduate, managed, you know, the county, county for a very long time as well. And so after air quotes retirement, she is still helping Clark County School District and the county as a whole for lifting up our children. To this board, and I know some of you were not here when it first transpired, and some of you came on, you've been so receptive to the training, to listening, to asking questions, pushing and making sure that things are transparent, that you clearly understand the $4 billion budget, so that your constituents then, when they have questions as well, that you have that tool belt, that skill set to move forward. And I just want to, you know, double down on Deputy Superintendent Gonzalez's work, also our new CFO, Justin Dayhoff. And I'll close it out with three of the sentences. There's many, much more on this letter that came, as my understanding, this is the first official action that Dr. Wakefield took as superintendent of public instruction, which was exciting. So this letter serves as a formal declaration that the Clark County School District has successfully concluded all required steps detailed in its corrective action plan. This significant achievement is a testament to the strong backing from the CCSD Board of Trustees, Superintendent Joan Ebert, and Chief Financial Officer, Justin Dayhoff. Their collective work has enhanced fiscal responsibility, sharpened budget scrutiny, and improved financial procedures for more effectively bolstering school operations. So congratulations, I think you all deserve a round of applause for the work that you've done to bring this to closure.
Thank you. I know we've made great progress as a team. Thank you, each trustee and our superintendent and her staff. With that, I'm going to With that, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the compliance monitoring update. Trustee Viasadi.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept agenda item 5.03, compliance monitoring update.
Thank you. Trustee Carvazos.
I'll second that motion.
Something was flashing, and I had to read that. So we have a first and a second. Please cast your votes. Trustee Henry.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. That concludes our business items. As a team, we are now going to move into public comment items not listed as action items on the agenda. We have a list of individuals. I'll go ahead and call Michael Leonetti. Are you still in the room, Michael? Okay, thank you so much. Steve Sanson. Oh, great. Steve, we have another mic here that's live as well. You could go to that. Is there, we've gotten some additional public comments. Is there anybody that has not completed a public comment card? Do you need one? Ms. Caitlin, could you give this gentleman? Anybody else? Okay. That'll close receiving public comment cards after this gentleman fills it out. But Mr. Leonetti, please proceed. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Michael Leonetti. I'm Michael Leonetti, Variety Show. I'm the face behind the plethora of complaints I've sent everybody on this board all throughout. This is, I can't mention the person's name, but I'm here for the, I'm concerned about the children of this teacher that he's teaching at Claude Perkins Elementary School, fourth grade school teacher. I don't need to mention his name. Everybody knows who I'm speaking of. We have a problem here. His TV show is called Wayne Allen Woo. He wears a wig, sunglasses, and he comes off with some ridiculous stuff, and he talks about Kung Liggins, talks about Fellatio, he talks about the horriblest things, especially racism. Now, I'm Italian. My mother and father were born in Italy. I don't like to be called a wop, dago, greaseball. It's not fair. I'm 73 years old, I've been in Vegas for 50 years. This school district has a problem with this guy, and I've tried a plethora of times to let you people know. If this man's doing something in the dark, what did you do into these children that I have a great concern about? And realistically, three, NRS 391.330, he's got to follow the rules and regulations. He has to follow the rules. This is a school teacher. The content of a person's character, the integrity you hold as an individual, and the compassion you feel towards another human being, if you don't have those qualities, you should not be a school teacher. You should not. You should not be anything to do near children. And this man's IQ should be teaching college. He's a very smart individual. I had my private investigator pull a whole background on this guy. Why is he teaching seven and eight-year-old children? I have no idea. But it has to come to an end of what's going on. My publicist wrote a book, 25,000 books I sold, it's called To See Corruption and Cover-Up. I've been in Vegas 50 years. I have never experienced anything like this man that, no matter who's on my show, and I had the best of the best in politics, he puts my show on and rips it apart and says the most nastiest things about. This is a school teacher that teaches fourth-grade children. You've got to set a precedence, ladies and gentlemen. You people can't do something like this. If this, if this is how you want to act, get the hell out, and you can't be a school teacher. There's a certain quality of a human being, how you're supposed to be. And what this guy does, take a look at his show. You can look at his show, it's called The Wayne Allen Woo. That's what he calls it. PAA Podcast Raw. From 12 o'clock, from 8 o'clock at night to midnight, with his television, his computer, what his friend that he's, he's Skyping, for four hours every single Saturday night. What the hell is this guy? Doesn't he have a family? Go get a pizza, go out, go enjoy yourself. He gets on that thing and he destroys everybody. My time is up. I had to say what I had to say. I'm never going to come back here again, but I told my lawyers, I want a petition to get the names of the students, of the people, so I can turn around and let the parents know what this guy does.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for using the guidelines. There is no copying in the audience during our business meeting, but I do appreciate you following our guidelines not to mention names. So thank you so much. Mr. Sanson, good to see you. After you, Stephanie Phillips, and you'll proceed there. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good evening, trustee. Steve Sanson, President of Veterans and Politics. The last time I sat at this podium, both trustee Edwards and Young were still serving on this board. I have filed formal written complaint, not once, but repeatedly against Christopher Dyer, a CCSD substitute teacher who hosts a vulgar and harassing podcast called the PAA. This complaint was sent to the Clark County Superintendent's Office, the principal of his school, the Nevada Department of Teachers Union, the Nevada Ethics Commission, and the CCSD Substitute Services Department. Not a, not, not a single one of them has responded. Mr. Dyer's behavior is not protected free speech. It's a public disgrace and a clear violation of multiple CCSD policies and the Nevada Code of Ethics for educators. He has gone far beyond the bounds of his constitutional rights and shown a complete disregard for authority, decency, and professional responsibility. Let me be clear about what's on the record. This man who steps into a CCSD classroom hosts a podcast where he told a female senior citizen to suck his genitalia. He screams profanity, attacks people by name, and use hateful threatening language, all while identifying himself publicly as a CCSD teacher. According to the CCSD policy 4100, off-duty conduct that negatively impacts the district or compromises public trust is subject to discipline. Policy 4150 explicitly prohibits verbal abuse or profanity while discharging professional duties. And under the Nevada Code of Ethics for educators, no educator shall engage in conduct that discredits the teaching profession. He violates all three, blatantly, repeatedly, and without consequences. This man who de- demeans others online is still being allowed around our students, including my own minor daughter, who stumbled upon his podcast and was exposed to his disgusting behavior. This should never happen. I demand that this board order an immediate investigation into Christopher Dyer's conduct, review his current standing as a substitute teacher, issue a written public response outlining what action will be taken, because if you don't, if CCSD continues to look the other way, you are not just tolerating this behavior, you're endorsing it. Our children deserve educators who lead by example, not by vulgarity. This district, this, this district's silence is not neutrality, it's negligence. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. After you, Ms. Phillips, I hope I'm saying this right, Shania Wade? Yes, thank you so much. Ms. Phillips, please proceed.
Stephanie Phillips, good evening, everybody. As parents, we want to teach our children to be kind, honest, responsible, and independent. We also rely on teachers to help model these same values, as they play such an important role in our children's daily lives. Just like parents, teachers should lead by example, demonstrating integrity, professionalism, and high moral character. Our kids learn not only from what adults say, but from what they do. For that reason, there should be a consistent and high standard for all teachers within our district. When an educator's public conduct fails, falls short of basic decency and professionalism, the district has a duty to review the matter seriously to protect students and maintain community trust. It has come to my attention that a local teacher, Chris Dyer, who reportedly teaches fourth grade in Las Vegas, hosts an online podcast called PAA Podcast that includes inappropriate and offensive language, personal attacks, and unprofessional behavior. Mr. Dyer ridicules, belittles, and criticizes others. He has a foul mouth and spreads falsehoods and lies. The F-word is used frequently. He continuously accuses others of having sexual affairs. He frequently tells others to suck his D I C K, and even said that to an elderly woman live on his podcast. He talks about the female anatomy all the while, using derogatory and inflammatory speech throughout his broadcasts. Multiple complaints have been reportedly filed with the district, yet it appears that no action has been taken. Imagine the impact on a student who discovers that this is how their teacher speaks and behaves outside the classroom. What message does that send about character and accountability? If the district ignores such behavior, it teaches our children that integrity does not matter and that there is no standard for conduct. I strongly urge the district to investigate all credible complaints against its educators. Parents and students deserve assurance that those entrusted with shaping young minds meet the highest standard of professionalism and respect, both inside and outside the classroom. Years ago, I alerted the principal at a Las Vegas school of a teacher acting inappropriately with students. Later, he was arrested, charged with felonies, subsequently pled guilty, and is now on the sex offender registry. Had they heeded my warning years prior, maybe that would not have happened. Don't let complaints go unanswered. Heed warnings of parents, because you never know what one will do who has such a deplorable moral compass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. After Mrs. Wade, Arkey Jones Jr., are you here?
Yeah, he's right.
Okay.
But we have two separate. Can we still stay?
Yes, and that's fine. I will, you'll give you, three minutes each. After that person, Teresa Frazier, are you in the room? Okay, Teresa, you'll be over here on the right. Thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Wade.
Okay. Good evening, trustees, superintendent, members of the Clark County School District Board. My name is Shania Wade, and I'm the mother of Arkey Jones, a student at Bookholder Academy in Henderson. My son, a child who loves school, loves learning, and adores his teachers, no longer feels safe at his school that should protect him. AJ is bright, kind, and respectful. His teachers described him as being engaged, curious, and always eager to help others. But despite all of that, he has been treated like a criminal, when in reality, he's been the victim. He's been bullied and unfairly disciplined by administrators. When I spoke up to protect my son, as any mother would, I was trespassed from the school. No mother should ever be prevented from attending their child's school. Because of this, I can't attend his band concerts in the winter or in the spring. I can't go pick him up in case of an emergency. I can't even pick up or drop off my son to school every day, which was a part of our morning routines. I'm being denied the basic rights of simply being his mother, and the harm continues. AJ is now being digitally monitored every day by the same admin I reported. He told me, Mom, it feels like I'm in trouble even when I'm doing nothing wrong. Imagine being 12 years old and being haunted at a school. That is not education, that's trauma to my baby. I want to be clear, my issue is not with his teachers. They have been wonderful and supportive. The problem lies with the leadership and the admin of Region Three and Bookholder, where bias, retaliation, intimidation have replaced care, empathy, and fairness. My son is beginning to doubt himself, whether on speaking up is the right thing to do or is it just makes things worse. As a mother, watching his like them, and my child, watching him lose trust in the adults that should be there to protect him and he should be able to rely on, is a pain I can't describe. I'm asking, I'm pleading with this board and the superintendent to see what's happening as a pattern of racial bias and retaliation and a misuse of their authority that has deeply harmed my family and my son. I'm asking you to lift the trespass against me and for participating in this, in my son's education, and to investigate the misuse of their surveillance and discriminatory practices and hold the leadership accountable and commit to real change so no other child or family has to endure this. All I want for my son is to feel safe again at school and to walk with pride, learn, laugh, and know he's protected just like any other child. So please do what's right, restore his dignity, restore his joy, and make him feel valued and safe like every other student at Bookholder Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Mr. Jones Jr. is here. If you could push the mic towards him. There you go. Thank you. Just state your name for the record, and please proceed.
Good eve, good evening. My name is Arkey Jones, and I'm a student at Bookholder Academy. I want y'all to know that I love school. I also love learning and my teachers and being part of my classes. But lately, I don't feel safe anymore. The constant monitoring and harassment makes it very hard to focus and feel comfortable at school. I set a goal for perfect attendance this year, and I reached it until I was suspended. Because of that, I'm no longer allowed to play basketball or join after-school activities, and that really hurts a lot. My grades have dropped, but I'm still committed to showing up every day, doing my best, and learning from my mistakes again and again. I just wanted to feel safe again, to learn, to grow, and to be part of school without fear. Please investigate what's happening so I can have that chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Frazier, and after you, Tyler Swick. Are you in the room? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Frazier, and I'm a highly qualified 17-year veteran music educator in CCSD. I'm here tonight to ask that you stop the loss of our highly qualified music and art teachers who are losing their positions when principals cut their programs to turn them into humanities positions and then install generalist teachers into those roles. When qualified music teachers lose their jobs, our students lose music education. It is crucial that our students and that all music and art in CCSD be taught by highly qualified specialists. Schools in Nevada should be following the Nevada Administrative Code. This code establishes detailed music instruction standards under Chapter 389, Academics and Textbooks. These regulations define expectations for student performance in music theory and practice across grade levels, focusing on artistic literacy, creative skills, and historical and cultural context. The Nevada Administrative Code provides increasingly complex grade-level expectations and standards in music for students as they progress through school. I have extensive supporting evidence on how high-quality music and art instruction helps students learn their other subjects. This evidence will not fit into a three-minute speech. I have prepared packets for you including this information. When a principal cuts music or art and then installs a generalist teacher to teach humanities in its place, they are no longer in compliance with the Nevada Administrative Code, nor are they honoring the Nevada Academic Content Standards for Music. SB 400 has been passed by the legislature and dictates that all schools must have highly qualified music and art teachers on staff. Currently, many schools have lost their music and art programs due to principals cutting these programs in a misguided effort to save money. No money is saved by cutting music and art because we all cost a principal the same amount of money regardless of our degree or field of study. Recently, parent groups met with our superintendent and raised their concerns over the loss of these music and art programs because their children have now lost their access to these vital subjects. COVID taught us a huge lesson. There is no recovery from lost instructional time. Every school that cuts music and art is taking away from the future of those students affected by the loss of these subjects. The solution is simple. Classroom teachers fill classroom positions, taking care of the deficit in that area that occurs every year in CCSD, while music and art positions will be staffed by those of us who are qualified and trained to deliver the pedagogy that ensures that students will learn music and art at high levels. We must honor the Nevada Administrative Code and our students by keeping highly qualified educators in their roles as music and art specialists. The teacher pipeline at UNLV will have many highly qualified music teachers coming out soon who won't see these jobs until they are, because they are not being flown by principals. CCSD has been voted into the top 100 communities in music education in the United States for 26 years running. If we want to become the destination district, we must preserve music and art in our students' schools. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you so much. After Tyler, Veronica Scott, are you still here? How about Heidi Melkarik? How about Patricia Scott? How about Christopher George?
I can just talk longer if you want. It's fine.
No, that's. Hold on, we're going, how about, and Stephanie, I did see you. So you're up after that, after that. Tyler, please proceed.
Hello.
Say your name for the record.
Absolutely. I'm Tyler Swick, a happy CCSD music teacher. First of all, I'm happy to be here. The last time I was here, my concern was my child's school actually hiring an unlicensed music teacher, and I'm happy to report that a licensed music teacher was hired, and my daughter loves going to her music class every rotation. So it really felt like a happy ending to that story. I'm here because I'm excited about talking about all the things we're doing right. These meetings get dark, don't they? They get, they get kind of negative. But music is something we really do right. We have, just to list off a few things, Heart of Education winners, Yamaha 40 Under 40 music educators, Grammy finalists, the 2024 PTA Teacher of the Year, and the 2025 CCSD Teacher of the Year are all serving music classrooms in our district. They're doing great things. And so it's kind of that crack in the windshield where nobody wants to really pull over because the crack is just this small, and I can still see, we can still drive. And then that crack grows. And so really, what we're trying to approach is, how do we glue that crack today, so that it doesn't turn into anything more serious? We'd love how incredible our community is, and as the other presenter brought up, that 26 years in a row, we've been considered a top community for music education. I know it's a coincidence, but that is the year I came to CCSD as a student. So, I know, I know. I transferred from a small Catholic school with no music program, and I transferred to Gilbert Elementary in North Las Vegas, and I walked into Kay Letho's elementary music room, and my mind exploded. I was never the same. I went from her to Hyde Park, where I joined the guitar club and band, and then I went to the Las Vegas Academy, where I majored in percussion, and then I went to college on a full-ride scholarship to play percussion and get my music ed. degree. I went from there to University of Iowa with a degree in music performance, and I came back immediately to become a teacher in CCSD. My family is here, I love Las Vegas. And as a product of CCSD, I believe in what we're doing. I think we are a destination, and a big part of this is the music side of it. And so what we're passionate about is that it's working already. We're not asking you to give us more, but just to make sure we get to stay doing what we're already doing. So I really appreciate your time. I know we are all hungry and ready to go home, so I'm going to lean back those 40 seconds, but thank you so much for having us, and I look forward to the wonderful things we accomplish together.
Thank you so much. After Stephanie, Lenny, are you still here?
Yes.
There you are. Please proceed, Stephanie. Just say your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kinsley. I'm one of the parents for my children's advocate. I had really nothing prepared to talk about, and then just sitting through this board meeting was so impressively appalling. I don't know how we're celebrating 40% less, success rates, like we're, we're celebrating when most of the kids in our schools are failing and aren't proficient in anything. And I'm just really, I'm coming to you guys, I feel so defeated, I feel like I live in clown world, I feel like I'm being gaslit, just by the confused look I'm getting on your face about how are you guys not embarrassed to be leading CCSD? It's been failing since I was in it. I'm 44 years old, I graduated high school in 1999, and my entire school career, I always heard the same complaints of everybody, not enough funding, not enough this. There's an intentional attack on our children, and there's an intentional demonic attack. You know it's demonic by the way trustees are scared that people will be introduced to Christianity if they get health care from somebody. Nothing gets worse when you, when you introduce Jesus, it only gets better. If, if some of these people had Jesus in their life, their children wouldn't be violent, their children wouldn't be trans, their children wouldn't think they were trapped in the wrong body. We have a mental health epidemic, and CCSD is just fostering failure. You're more concerned on what color the child is who doesn't know how to do math, or doesn't know how to get to school on time, instead of addressing the broken home that they come from, which I apologize, I'm sorry, you probably came from a broken home, you know, it's probably a, it's probably repeating bad cycles. I'm sure the children who are coming from these broken homes have parents who came from broken homes, and now we're just repeating it. And I just don't know what it's going to take for somebody... Sorry, Lorena, you do, or I'm sorry. There is one board member that actually tries, and I just feel like the rest of you, it's just like, I don't know if someone's paying you to fail, if you really believe the stuff that you believe, you're scared kids will meet Jesus. We need something from you guys. It's embarrassing. And actually, before I leave, I would like to read some of the books that these principals have in their school, like, let me, this was a fun one, it's called Sex is Funny, it's a Darnell Elementary School. Like other holes in our body, the anus is usually very sensitive, which means it can feel good to touch, but can also hurt when, when it's done rough. So the same principals that were here, this is in one of their schools, elementary school, has porn in their schools for kids. Like, what is it going to take for you guys? Please, I'm begging you. You make more than the United States President. Please, please.
Thank you. The next person is after Lenny, Sam Millis. Did I say it right? Okay. Thank you, Lenny. Just say your state for, your name for the record, and please proceed.
Yes, I'll state my name. My name is Lenny Lythor. It's a pleasure to be here again, trying to follow up after that. First, real quickly, most of you make peanuts, except for the superintendent, she makes a lot of peanuts, so congratulations. I'm actually here to, right now, I actually want to talk about customer service, so this is actually one of her initiatives that I strongly agree with. And the problem is, is I feel like, again, the district's failing badly in that mission. Customer service in education, sometimes people, people that I respect have, I mean, why do we need that? Well, you know, we're not, we're not selling something. Yeah, you are, you're selling education. But customer service means different things. So in education, a lot of it means communication, listening to parent concerns, communicating with them, responding to the situations at hand. And that's an initiative that I really hope becomes more successful. The problem with that is, almost every couple of days, we hear about a new kid getting hit on the way to school. We don't hear about the communication side afterwards. I actually emailed my son's principal one time, said, "Hey, maybe you could do a robocall to all the parents that go to the school, just to encourage parents to go over safety situations with the children." Nope, didn't do that. You know, schools could do that, schools could do assemblies, there are things that could be done, that could, the district could be communicating more easily, things to help keep the children safe. As for those teachers that made their terrible social media posts, you know, and again, maybe you guys took some action, maybe you don't, I don't know that. I shouldn't necessarily say you guys, because again, I believe that'd be only up to the superintendent. But again, nothing's being communicated to the parents. So the parents are feeling angry, because they don't know what's going on at all. And I know you can't necessarily go into specifics, but when I sent, when I actually filed a bullying complaint against my son's assistant principal back when he was at Walter Johnson, again, no real communication that, yes, they took that more seriously, they did actually create a safety plan, so my son no longer had any interactions with that person, but there are so many issues at hand. We are constantly, the district's constantly facing lawsuits for special education, and I'm sure they're taking some steps to improve it. But how are you communicating that to the, to the community? You want to keep on saying, "We're going to make this a destination district"? Great. I actually, I've said it before, I find that it's going to be almost impossible, because it's too large, but we do have a lot of destination schools. How are you going to communicate that success to the parents? Because the four principals that were here tonight, I understood them. The parents that are watching this on YouTube, yeah, they're not going to. We need to have, we need to go back to that community, customer service, communication skills, and realize, if there's a complaint, if there's something serious going on that the community is up in arms about, we need to communicate some actions to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. After Sam, Dr. Kyle Rogers, are you still in the audience? Thank you. Sam, just state your name for the record. Please proceed.
My name's Sam Millis. I'm a teacher at Chaprell High School. I'm a social studies teacher there. I was actually here last spring, and I told you about a cover-up that had happened at that school where, or where Mrs. Cummings, our head principal, was called in, a woman who had reported a chokehold that was unnecessary. I sent the video to all you guys. The assistant principal had broken up a fight, and he, at that point, without necessary need to, put him in a chokehold. And then I came here and told you guys about it, because Mrs. Cummings had called that lady, she works for Boys Town, she was the only employee who worked for Boys Town at our school, into her office after that, she had told her boss, and the boss called Miss Cummings, and Miss Cummings said, "Nothing happened, nobody broke up this fight." Well, the student had an IEP, and so she was covering that up, because she should have did a report, right? And then at that point, right, and before that, I had also went to the paper, where I had said, "They're not letting kids go to the bathroom at our school," right? And the way, I'm not going to tell the details, but it's still happening. And nothing, none of those things changed. I talked to the lady, Carla, last month, who I'd, I'd talked after the meeting, I talked to, Dr. Jesse Wells came and saw me, I gave him the name. A week later, when nobody had talked to her, because if there's only two people in a meeting, and you want to investigate it, you got to talk to that person. And that person, as of three weeks ago, who works at Boys Town, or last year at our school, was never interviewed. So when I came and told you guys about that, at our school, we've had really bad, like, interactions with teacher, with staff members and students over the last two years. We've had multiple teachers who don't teach classes at all, give everybody an A, they don't do anything about that. But I've been retaliated against by this. And it's, this is part of a larger pattern. I, as a government teacher, two years ago, I did a thing in my class that was along the standards, and it was protected by the First Amendment, my students' First Amendment, and I received an admonishment for that, even after I made that out. I received an admonishment for telling my kids to go to the press if they thought that our bathroom policy was illegal, which is, again, violating my First Amendment rights. I am now, when I went back to school after Dr. Wells gently blew me off, he responded to a few things, the last day, I showed up, and I wasn't told by my supervisor, I was told by a different teacher that I'd be moving classes. Then after I left, partly through the day, I was one of the last teachers to leave, they fined me a half a day of pay. Then, and which, and then, since that time, when I showed back up, I had people bullying me, and I've had people bullying me constantly, and then they have been used as witnesses against me. No matter what I do, it's always turned on my side. I showed, I took leave, because this was such an unfair thing, I wear, I'm running out of time, but I have multiple students who have things, say, "I was forced to sign a statement about you saying stuff in class that wasn't true." And so I gave that to the lady from EMR, and she just said, "No, whatever." And that's, and so then, what's happened is, when I went back after taking leave, they showed up, and they said, "Here, sign this new piece of paper, and it is going to be just a new date." And I'm sorry, I'm just finished this part, because, but it wasn't.
Thank you, Sam.
It was a totally new list of different claims that I'd be investigating for.
After, after Dr. Rogers, Leslie, are you still in the room? Leslie Quinn? Nope. How about Tanya? I know, I saw you. Nope, you're good? Okay. Chad Ellsworth? This, okay, Chad. Now Chad, will you and Amy be making different statements, or did you want to?
Yeah, we'll just do that.
Okay, so Chad, you'll be next. Dr. Rogers, if you could, please proceed.
All right, Dr. Kyle Rogers with the record. Last time I was before this board is because I was seeking student discipline data through a public records request. I finally obtained that data after paying CCSD over $500 to obtain it, money I make as a teacher. I'm going to move past that, and I want to focus on how atrocious the issue of discipline is currently for our students. If you were to combine in-house suspension, RPC, suspension and suspension with instruction for last year, how many times do you think that was used across all of CCSD? Take a moment to think about that, or including repeat offenses? How many times do you think those cases of exclusionary discipline occurred? It's not thousands, it's not tens of thousands. The number for last year is 134,000 cases. When I say a case, you need to understand how the data is counted in the system. A case means a student was suspended. It does not matter that they were suspended for five days or 10 days. So when I say there was 134,000 cases, I mean there were hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of days of missed instruction, because each case can be multiple days. In fact, if we were to give it an underestimate of about two days of missed instruction per case, since we've returned to in-person, in-person instruction after the pandemic, it would be estimated that we have missed over a million days of missed instruction in the classroom due to exclusionary discipline. You all get discipline reports, but you get very tailored reports, which is why I worked so hard to get this data to show that the problem is so much worse than what you know. Some highlights from that data. One shows, one thing I've discovered is that CCSD is not following their policies. So if you look at the Student Code of Conduct, it says what students are allowed to be suspended for, in-house suspension for, et cetera. I have found out that students are being placed in in-house suspension, in fact, there were 19,000 cases of it happening last year for tardies. That violates the Student Code of Conduct. School admin are not allowed to give in-house suspension for tardies, yet it happened 19,000 times, which tells me, you all have been told, central office, they talk to their school principals, they review the data. Well, if they're reviewing the data, how come 19,000 cases of suspensions, or in-house suspensions, got by without it being caught? There's a lot of other data I would like to go over. For example, 70% of violence to staff was done by kids with disabilities, with IEPs, that's a big conversation to have. And one last piece I want to point out is the disproportionality for our black students. It is clearly a racial bias issue. There is higher disproportionality for categories that are more vague, like insubordination, but when you look at categories like possession of a weapon or possession of controlled substance, the disproportionality goes down. Lastly, the disproportionality is highest for categories like aggressive behavior, which is what the student back there got in trouble for.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. And one thing I would like to point out, is the previous speaker, did it explicitly raise this app and said, "There are people..."
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
"...not culturally okay."
Mr. Chad Ellsworth, and Amy, you're next. Please proceed, Mr. Ellsworth, and just state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Chad Ellsworth. I'm a parent of a student in Clark County School District, and I'm just here to hopefully advocate for the development of policy that, that creates fair playing grounds in football in the CCSD schools. The schools are divided into divisions based, I believe, on, on enrollment size and their past performance in the past, and they're putting divisions to make it equal and fair for all the teams to play. But the, and with the nature of football, you know, having a high probability of injury, it's important to keep competition among the teams as equal as possible. Having said that, this year, with the football, there's been a kind of a little disaster of the football seeding for the, for the teams, where you have five A teams that are being put in open brackets or higher playing levels, that puts the kids at a higher risk of being played, or injured, I mean. So I feel it's an unethical thing for the school district to do, to put these kids at a higher risk of injury. My son is a sophomore right now, playing on the varsity team, but last year, he was a freshman, playing on the freshman team, and they played a, an open division team in which he had his collarbone broken by a student that was a reclass and was almost two years older than his age, and was not a freshman, playing on the freshman team. So not only are they not following the same rules that we have to follow, but they're also bringing students down and playing on teams that shouldn't be playing, and they're having more coaches, they, they're not following the standards on the number of coaches that are allowed for teams, and, and so it puts kids at, at higher risk of being injured. And so hopefully, you guys can be aware of this, I'm sure you are, when you make decisions to determine who's going to do the seeding. I know it's NIAA right now, I don't know how the, the relationship works with you, if you have a contract with them, or if that's just a Nevada State thing put together by Carson City that they use, but it's, it's just unfair for the, the divisions to play up or down, just to keep things fair for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Amy, after you, Luke Thrasher, are you, is that you? Did I say it wrong?
No, it's, he had to go, but I have a statement if I'm allowed to be.
Let me ask our legal counsel if that's allowed. Let me, one moment. While I'm researching that, Ms. Amy, can you please proceed?
Yes, I'm Amy Ellsworth, Chad's wife, and have a son that's a freshman, or a sophomore at Foothill High School. And I didn't know much about Bishop Gorman until last year, when our son broke his collarbone, and I was pretty upset to find out that it wasn't just equal playing grounds, very unequal. I feel that Bishop Gorman should not play public schools, because they operate under completely different conditions. Now, reclassing is fine for private schools, but not fine for CCSD schools. Well, Gorman began strategically using reclassing for the athletes about 15 to 20 years ago, and guess what happened? They began winning all the state championships, 14 out of 15 years, okay? So, and this is a Nevada state title, why are they competing for a state title with public schools? It only benefits them, and helps them have the prestige that they need to continue recruiting these athletes. And they have done this at the risk of all those that play them, as they are generally one to two years older per grade than our children. If a public school wants to play them, it should be optional, because they don't operate under the same rules. Plus, approximately, and this is approximately, 38% of Gorman's students are from Nevada. So they're winning these state titles, and most of them aren't even from Nevada. They have outgrown the public schools, and they need to be in a league that operates under similar rules. From what I could find, Nevada is the only state that still allows private and recruiting schools to compete against public schools without any balancing or safety measures. This is why Bishop Gorman's dominance is so extreme compared to other states. It raises an important question, why hasn't Nevada taken action to protect our student athletes? This leads me to ask, if safety for our players is not the motivating factor, then what is? It seems to be very balanced to Bishop Gorman. Our kids deserve advocates who will... Our kids deserve advocates who will stand up and ensure that they're competing on an even and safe playing field. So, I would love for our representative to be able to bring this to the board. Plus, if I have a little bit extra time, all of the rules, all of the stats were not input correctly, putting us to play against Gorman. And they did not take all of the fair, all of these stats in, you know, and, sorry, I'm just nervous, in account. And so, we're playing them even though we're not supposed to be playing them. So, it'd be lovely if someone could advocate for us.
Thank you, Ms. Thrasher. And if the individual is not present, we, what we'll do is allow their testimony to be part of the public record, so you could give it to our staff here.
Is that mine too, or just read what he said?
No, it would have to be Luke, that would have to be present to read it. So, for his comments, so we want it to be part of the public record, you could give it to the assistant and we will, now you signed up as well, are you, I'm sorry, and what is your name? You didn't sign up?
I did not.
Okay, all right then. How about, I hope I'm saying this right, the last name, Akiko Cooks. Thank you for that help. Is that person still in the audience? Okay. And then Mark, right after, Mark, you're, okay, thank you so much. Ms. Cooks, please just state your name for the record and please proceed.
Akiko Cooks for the record, A-K-I-K-O-C-O-O-K-S. Good evening trustees, superintendent and members of the Clark County School District community. My name is Akiko Cooks, Executive Director of 1865 No Racism in Schools. This is a joint statement with our community organization partner, Code Switch Restorative Justice for Girls of Color. We come before you in solidarity with Arke Jones, a black student at Burkholder Academy of Environmental Science, and his mother, Ms. Shania Wade, a parent who was unjustly silenced and criminalized while advocating for her child's safety. The facts shared with our organization reveal the disturbing pattern of racial bias, discrimination, discriminatory discipline, and administrative misconduct that has left both Arke and his family traumatized and without support. Instead of receiving protection or restorative intervention, Arke, who was the victim of violence, was repeatedly suspended. His mother, who sought to advocate for him, was trespassed from school grounds, stripped of her legal right to protect her child. Equally alarming, in the ongoing harassment, bullying, and retaliation, Arke now faces in the form of daily digital surveillance by school administrators, specifically Mr. Dumo, using GoGuardian, a tool the district claims is meant to keep students safe. Instead, it has become a mechanism of intimidation that makes Arke feel targeted, unsafe, and constantly under watched. This is not protection, this is persecution. We have the following demands, the immediate lifting of the trespass against Ms. Wade, full release of all records and documentation related to the disciplinary actions of trespass, a formal review of disciplinary procedures by Region Three Leadership and CCSD Equity and Diversity Staff, the implementation of restorative justice practices to address the harm caused and prevent future bias, an end to discriminatory surveillance and misuse of digital tools like GoGuardian, accountability measures for staff and administrators who have contributed to this ongoing pattern of racial harassment and abuse of authority, and a public apology and acknowledgement of harm coupled with a commitment to staff training in trauma-informed and culturally responsive practices. Racism, retaliation, and abuse of discretion have no place in our schools. Every black student deserves to learn in an environment that is safe, affirming, and free from radicalization and harm. We call upon this board and the superintendent to act swiftly, restore justice, and make Arke feel affirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mark, you're next, and after you, Jane Adet.
Mark, Mark Diefenbacher, member of SURGE Las Vegas, speaking as an individual. Most of us believe that every child, whatever their color, background, or zip code, should have the freedom to learn in a supportive environment that respects their humanity, upholds their dignity, and responds fairly to mistakes and missteps. But right now, we're seeing Trump's way of doing things creep into our district that harms kids who are black, brown, LGBTQ+, or disabled for making mistakes that, for wealthy white kids, are deemed part of growing up and learning. A clear example is what happened to the Wade family. When Ms. Wade tried to stand up for her son, she and her family were met with digital surveillance, retaliation, and an abuse of power instead of being heard. To be clear, this pattern reflects how MAGA politicians and their wealthy backers operate while they field divisions based on what we look like or where we come from, so they can drain resources from our schools and allow the richest few to get away with not paying what they owe. We can't let that happen here. Our schools must treat every child as equal, especially in situations of conflict. This board can do right by families like the Wade family, protect our freedoms, and fight MAGA's approach. By joining together, we can build a first-choice school district where every child can learn, grow, and thrive. Today, our community stands with the Wade family and with local groups, Code Switch and No Racism in Schools 1865, calling for accountability, transparency, and real restorative justice that focuses on healing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. After you, Jane, Ms. Hartman, Hartzman? Is that right? Okay, Ms. Jane, please proceed.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Ebert. Jane Adet for the record, member of SURGE Las Vegas, and speaking as an individual, valuing freedom for our children, for every child in Clark County School District, to learn, to grow, and to feel safe in their schools.
Can you hold on, Ms., for a second, Ms. Jane, pause her, thank you. It is our role to listen to public comment, but when there's discussion out in the audience, it makes it difficult for us to hear the person. So I'd ask that you respect the individual and allow us to hear the person speaking. So please, keep your voices down. Thank you. Ms. Jane, please proceed.
What happened to Ms. Wade's family is an assault on that freedom. AJ should have been protected and was instead punished. His family, who spoke up for him, was silenced. Instead of care, his family has been met with control. And instead of accountability, they were met with retaliation. As a retired school social worker, I watched the same assault on the same freedoms to learn in safe environments in the city from which I retired. What I learned is that it's never enough to pass a policy by a board and then assume that your job is done. As in the city that I retired from, data can be used to secure freedom, but it also can be used to maintain the status quo. That is apparently our situation. Data is only as good as the superintendent's and the board's commitment to the intent of the written policies and regulations. That means that assuring adequate, accurate, transparent data and providing regular reporting to the community through board meetings. When those in power use district policy to protect the status quo, they strip away our collective freedoms. Freedom is not just an absence of harm, it's the presence of justice, dignity, and belonging. The problem is never one individual, it's a system of fear. It's a pattern of racial bias and misuse of authority that values power over people. That system divides families from their schools and silences them. True freedom can't coexist with fear. It demands transparency, fairness, and courage on behalf of all of our families, brown, black, and white. That is what the Wade family is fighting for. That is the freedom that you, as trustees, have the power and the moral obligation to protect as part of supervising our superintendent. So I call on the Clark County School Board to take action on the demands that were presented this evening by our partners, to SURGE. In addition, we're claiming, we say we claim the value of the idea of a safe and respectful learning environment. We really must address the systems that are not working to provide those environments. This means we can all get behind Ms. Wade's demand to conduct a district-wide review of all discipline practices for racial bias. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. After you, Ms. Hartman, Ms. Young, are you still in the audience? Awesome. Please proceed.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Superintendent Ebert. I'm Jane Hartman Zurbek. I'm a native-born Las Vagan, I graduated from Las Vegas High Downtown. I'm a retired teacher in the Clark County School District for 31 years and a member of SURGE Las Vegas. I am sharing my thoughts as an individual. I care deeply about our city and our CCSD. People arrive in Las Vegas from all over the country, all over the world, in hopes of a better life than back home. A job, a place to live, a trade union, a place to worship, a school to educate my kids is the mantra. The school community in which their students attend is paramount, and it is the goal and duty to give each and every one of the 280,000 students a great education. I have to tell you, I am totally impressed with the quality of the evening, the principals, the leadership, everything was wonderful tonight about our school district. But I am here this evening to say that I am disheartened to learn that there's been an unconscious or perhaps conscious bias in how black students and students of color are treated. This does not facilitate great education. Most recently, it has come to my attention that a student at Burkholder Academy of Environmental Science was kicked by a teacher and some students. I'm not sure if this is exact, but that's what I believe to be true. This is an outrageous behavior. When a student's mother came to the school to investigate the situation, as she should, what any parent would do, she was labeled as a trespasser. All of these actions are a misuse of authority. These actions set an example to other teachers and students on campus as acceptable behavior, and I ask the question, where's the rational adult behavior of leadership that offers dignity, justice, and a sense of community in which all participants are held in respect? I saw that with the four principals tonight, they were fabulous. I don't know what was going on at Burkholder. They have a fabulous curriculum, I looked at them online, and wonderful lessons, but I think that there's a need for deep reflection at their campus, actually in district-wide, and even for myself. I look at my own unconscious bias. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young, after you, Jasmine, are you, awesome. Ms. Young, please proceed.
My name is Amara and I'm a current student on the Centennial Campus who felt enraged, disgusted, and disappointed after I was informed about the racial attack that occurred on October 6th. I quickly did what I could to get in contact with the family in No Racism in Schools 1865 to see how I could help. I knew that if an attack like this was allowed to happen on campus and get pushed under the rug and go unaddressed, it meant future student stories would go unaddressed as well. I then went about helping by making a call-to-action presentation to share with the students, informing them of what happened on campus and linking a Google form for them to complete. The form asked a series of questions varying from how the students feel regarding the racial incident to how they feel about the way things happen on campus generally. Out of 108 students who interacted, when asked the question of if they were to get an incident with a white kid on campus on a scale of 1 to 10, how fairly do you think the situation would be handled? 10 very fairly, 1 not fairly at all, to which 22.2% voted 1, 18.5% voted 5%, or, sorry, 18.5% voted 5, and 13% voted 3. That's 53% of the responses gathered. When asked how safe they feel when kids wear MAGA hats around campus, 10 very safe, 1 very unsafe, 46.3% voted 1, 14.8% voted 2, and 11.1% voted 10. That's 72.2% of responses. When asked how they feel about the school hiding the racial attack, one student said unsafe without trust for the school, like they don't care. Another said it is highly upsetting that they don't let other kids know it's not all right and they won't tolerate it. There are 108 responses for that question. I have access to, you know, the forums if the board would like to see more of that data. Of course, redacting any personal student information because some students did choose to stay in contact. And to this day, October 30th, the principal has still yet to inform the parents in any way, yet he claims that he will be initiating a unity committee and other efforts to help students feel safe on campus. But if you have to implement all these things just for students to feel safe on campus, wouldn't it make sense that the parents are aware of what's happening on campus and why all these precautions and safety committees have to be implemented in the first place? You guys said something earlier about how the two most important or prominent parts of an effective school are first the teachers, then the principal. In this situation, the principal didn't even inform many of the teachers. The first that they had heard about the situation was from me, or they had only heard rumors. So how are the teachers supposed to support the students and influence positive behaviors when they don't know what's happening on campus? And if the principal is the head of the school and he's setting the example for the rest of the people in the school, what kind of precedent is he setting for staff and students? And what is the board's part in enabling it if you're not holding the teachers and principals in the district that you represent accountable?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. Jasmine, and then our last person, Logan. Please proceed, just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Jasmine Cunyaba. I am here as a concerned individual. I was here earlier this month and I learned about another child who was racially, well, pretty much racially beat up and slurs were thrown at that child. And I'm here again to support the family of AJ and his mother. I don't know why you guys talk about parent involvement, and she's clearly being an involved parent, she's bringing an issue to you guys and trying to be there for her child, and she's being kicked off of campus and she's not able to be part of her kid's life. And I don't understand where the hypocrisy is, where you guys come and you guys talk about parents not being involved and the moment they try to be involved, you guys don't want them to be. You guys don't want them to have an opinion. You guys don't want them to protect their children. There's kids constantly being racially targeted. A couple weeks ago, there was a student-led protest against ICE. They see what's going on. They see that they're being targeted. They're not stupid. And it's kind of frustrating that you treat them like they don't see what's going on in this world, that they don't hear parents who come up here and say racial shit, and I'm sorry, excuse my language, but it's very offensive. And that's taught at home. And it's clearly being projected in schools. And I think that we need to address this issue. We need to protect our students, and that doesn't just mean the white kids, I mean all kids, from all backgrounds. It does not matter, I don't care what you, what some people have on their opinions here about gender and their miseducation about it, they need to protect all children, and if they're not gonna do that, they should not be on this committee, they should not be a trustee here. And that's all I have to say to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Logan, just say your name for the record.
Also, really quick, there was the folks who had the comments from earlier where you were like, "That should be in this portion instead of..."
Oh, yes, but I...
So there might be like two or three more?
So, I thought it was Chad and, no. Give me a second, hold on for just a second. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, that was our mistake, and so, Joseph, you still would like to speak? And what about your wife, would she also like to speak? Okay, thank you. Please just state your name for the record, Mr. Logan.
My name is Logan McMillian. I grew up in CCSD and since then, I've become a veteran of our National Guard, and something I learned in the military is, when a subordinate, like whether it's another junior leader underneath you, or it's a brand-new kid that you're trying to teach, when a subordinate behaves in a certain way, it's because their leadership makes them feel comfortable to do so. And consistently, what we have seen here in CCSD is that... And consistently, what we have seen here in CCSD is that your subordinates feel comfortable being racist and doing racist things. Your subordinates are comfortable singling out and targeting Black children, refusing to address their parents' concerns, and instead trespassing them. And those administrators feel comfortable to do so because you have created a culture where that is acceptable behavior. Because you, all of you, have created a space where people who have these horrible opinions about Black and trans and other minority groups feel like they can just say whatever they want and treat these people however they want. And that is always a direct reflection of you. You need to firmly punish teachers who are abusing their authority in order to punish Black students unnecessarily. You need to look into the amount of suspensions that you're experiencing, look into which administrators and which teachers are just dishing these out like they're candy, and address that. You need to create an environment where your teachers, your administrators, even the students understand that this behavior is unacceptable, that it will be met and dealt with as harshly as possible. Because to create an environment where that's not the case is, in this day and age, just utterly unacceptable. You have to create a space where people feel safe to come to school. You have to create a space where people feel welcome to come to school. This cannot continue to be a country only for people who look like me. It has to be a country for people who look like everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And... Kiara, am I saying it right? Okay. Joseph, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Joseph Farrar. Thank you, Board of Trustees, Superintendent. So, we've talked a lot about data tonight, and I hate to do math when I'm not in school, but I'm going to talk a little bit about math. So, the NIAA released the, you know, final rankings for their new HRM system on Sunday at noon, October 26th. And HRM stands for Harbin, Rubric, and MaxPreps. And as a football team, you can be ranked differently in each system. So Shadow Ridge, when it was released, was ranked fourth in the Harbin system, fourth in the Rubric, and fourth in MaxPreps for Southern Nevada. To get your actual HRM score, you have to add those and then divide by three. So, 4 plus 4 plus 4 is 12. You divide by 3, that gives you your final HRM score that Shadow Ridge had of 4, which ranked them fourth seed to play against Bishop Gorman. Then, it was Las Vegas who ranked fifth for Harbin, fifth for Rubric, and sixth for MaxPreps, giving them fifth seed with an HRM of 5.3. And Foothill ranked sixth for Harbin, sixth for Rubric, and fifth for MaxPreps, giving them sixth seed with an HRM score of 5.6. That same day at 3:00 PM on October 26th, the NIAA announced that the rankings had changed in the MaxPreps system, forcing them to rerun the rankings. The update actually dropped Shadow Ridge and MaxPreps system from fourth to seventh, which is a pretty extreme drop considering that no one's ever dropped like that after losing to Bishop Gorman. So what did that do? It meant that they had a tie HRM with Las Vegas High School, and Foothill was now in sixth seed still. So how do you break a tiebreaker in the HRM system? Well, it wasn't documented when they released it before the season started, but then they announced that MaxPreps was the tiebreaker. So MaxPreps caused the tie because Shadow Ridge had dropped and was now tied with Las Vegas, or with Las Vegas. But they had to go back to MaxPreps and say, okay, so who is ranked higher in MaxPreps? And when they found that out, well, then Las Vegas was now fourth seed playing against Bishop Gorman. Fast forward to Monday, and they released another update that there was information received about a forfeit against Foothill High School. They reran the rankings, now Foothill was fourth seed, having to play Bishop Gorman. I could do all the math, but you get the point. The NIAA and MaxPreps, we got to figure out what happened there. What went on, and how do we correct that going forward? Regardless of that, I couldn't be prouder of our school, our team, or my son, who's a senior on the varsity football team at Foothill High School who has played four years at Foothill. And he's played Gorman twice, and will be there on November 14th. And as we say at Foothill, "Go Foothill, go Falcons, Foothill Falcons, fight, fight, fight." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kiara, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Kiara Farrar. Thank you, Madam President, the board, Superintendent Ebert. You've heard a lot tonight about the NIAA, and we chose tonight to show up because we feel like we have fought for four years, myself. I'm a mother of five. One has graduated from CCSD, and I have four kids still in CCSD, so this matters to me in particular. So right now, I'm going to lay aside the numbers, and I'm going to speak on behalf of 17 seniors, 17 football players, who have built a brotherhood on the field and in the classroom. And when the NIAA announced a new division alignment that would finally let them compete with schools on a level playing field, the dream of a state title became real for them. As parents, we cheered, we watched our community rally behind them, and we watched them fight back from games that seemed impossible to win. This week, we prepared for another home game, another night under the lights on the field that they've poured four years into. Tonight, they should have been there. Hearing their classmates cheer them on and our phenomenal band play one last show for them, but they aren't. That was stolen from them this weekend by what I'll call, at best, the NIAA's incompetence and, at worst, its collusion. Instead, their season will be ending on the Bishop Gorman Field, a nationally-ranked powerhouse that Northern Nevada schools refuse to play because of player safety concerns. We share those concerns in Southern Nevada. Yet our kids are forced to play under the threat of suspension or playoff exclusion. Policies that are meant to protect students aren't enforced equally for charter schools and private schools, leaving families who support their local schools at a disadvantage, and our children are put at risk. Our seniors know that this won't be fixed for them, even though it was repeatedly changed and it gave them a glimmer of hope that maybe it would be fixed for them. It's not. But they know that they're still going to step on that field, and they're going to fight with everything that they have. And at Foothill, one of the things our players say at the end of every game, win, lose, happy, sad, they stand in front of the stands and they tell us all that they are a team and a family. And I believe that it's our job, as their parents, as their admin, as anyone who supports them, to stand up as their team and their family and tell them that we will work to fix this for future classes, and that the 2026 class will go out without what they were owed, but they will leave behind a legacy of a family who looks out for their siblings, for their younger classmates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That, I believe, ends our public comment, Vice President. All right, with that, I will go to 7.01 upcoming meetings. We have our next Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, November 5th, at 4:00 PM here in this boardroom. I will go to item number 8.0. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Trustee Cavazos.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
Second.
You have a first and a second, please cast your votes. Trustee Henry. Okay. Go ahead and show the vote count. That passes 6 to 0. Thank you so much, have a good evening.